Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Garrett Park Town Council. This is April 8th, 2024. On March 11th, 2024, the mayor and town council met in open session. Present were Mayor Welch and council members Jerilee Bennett, Todd Eisenstadt, Lisa Max, Phil Schulp, and Stephen Paskowski. Town manager Barb Matthews and assistant town manager Caleb Bucher were also in attendance. At 6:07 PM, council member Max moved that we go into closed session pursuant to Maryland code, general provisions, Article Section 3-305B1 and 7, to discuss the employment and compensation of candidates for employment over whom the town council has jurisdiction and other personnel matters that affect these specific individuals and consult with council to obtain legal advice regarding infrastructure in the town. During the closed meeting, the town council authorized the town manager to extend an offer of employment to one of three finalists for the full-time position of maintenance assistant. The closed meeting adjourned at 7:15 PM. All right, you have before you the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if we could bring up something for discussion and it really had to do with the meeting we just talked about. I just wanted to find, you know, we got to do anything as far as the storm sewers and I know we have to speak in vague terms.
I think that's something that the next steps need to be done, not in public yet.
Right, so the what I'm, okay, so then to that, what I'm just basically saying is knowing that we have to do that for sure. Are we going to schedule something like say this meeting so that we can do that, whatever that is that we might want to do?
That meeting would probably take place in closed session with legal counsel, so I would need to check on their availability. If you all would like, I can get some, some dates from them.
I'd like to get a decision about what we're gonna do.
And I don't rather be in council present for that, for making that decision.
We need time to discuss.
The only way you can do it privately is if you have council present. Or I can't think of another exception under the Open Meetings Act other than that. That would be applicable.
Okay. Let's do, let's wait till Stephen gets here to make, to discuss that.
Sure. Fine, yeah, no, I just wanted to either put it on the agenda or whatever. I just wanted to move forward, whatever the case is.
All right, any other, any, any other changes or any other questions about the agenda? If not, we can consider it approved as presented. Oh, well, plus the addition of discussing another meeting time. You have in front of you minutes from the February 28th special town council meeting, the March 11th council meeting and the March 11th closed meeting. We've seen these all before, so they should be familiar. Are there any changes that anyone needs to make before we ease to bed and consider them adopted? Okay, without objection, we will approve those minutes as presented. Are there any presentations by residents? Please.
Hello, Ken Schwartz, 10919 Claremont Avenue. I'll keep it very short. I have two or three topics to raise very lightly. One is the last month I indicated that the 24 operating budget is going up by 22% compared to 23. Actually, based on most recent tables that our pitch presented, it's 23%. But I wouldn't be too excited about that because for the first three quarters of the year, only two thirds of the funds in the operating budget have been expended, which suggests at the end of the years you will have a surplus. So what I'm saying is that the actual increase will be a good deal less than 23%. It might even be in the single digits. I don't know. Unless you guys go on the spending spree in the last quarter, which I doubt you should do. So I guess perhaps you can consider that good news. Secondly, I want to make two comments on the draft 2025. One is regarding local income taxes. The plan that you have before you suggests that local income tax revenue should be, the estimate for local income taxes should be reduced by $190,000 compared to 2024 estimate, or about actually more than 25%. To me, that seems rather extreme in terms of an estimation. I realize that it's very hard to estimate local income taxes. They've been down, they've been up. 21 and 22, they were down. 23 and 24, they skyrocketed. But I don't see the rationale for taking it back down to the essentially the 21 and 22 levels, which this would essentially do. I would also just mention that wealthy people are moving into towns. You see all the houses for over a million dollars that are, that are going for sale when they have been sold. So I'm thinking that the town has gotten considerably more wealthy than it has been in the past. So I ask for your consideration of not, maybe if you want to reduce it fine, but not reduce it to that degree. The last comment I have is on the, again, on the 2025 budget. Town Hall, I think if you were to ask town residents, what is the top capital priority for the town? Town residents would overwhelmingly say Town Hall. Yet it's unclear to me that actually that that is the priority of the council. Why do I say that? Take the 2025 budget as drafted. There's $475,000 in new funds going into the capital budget. Of that, not a penny is going to Town Hall. There will be 2025 funds spent on Town Hall, but that'll be funds already appropriated, the 1.5 million you're all, you're all familiar with. So what will be funded is a variety of other projects with the 475. There's the sidewalks, there's street curbs, there's paint in place, there's stormwater evaluation, but nothing for Town Hall. That seems to suggest to me that the, the, the town does not want to put its resources into Town Hall. It would prefer to seek other sources of funds. That might be the grant funds that have been already requested to 750 from the state. There's the 500, 500,000 federally. There potentially there will be a bond issuance, but remember if there's a bond issuance, it has to go to referendum in the town according to the charter and/or deletions of certain segments of option number four. So I would, I would conclude this, that section by just saying, if you disagree with me and you want to keep the funds exactly as they are currently planned in the, in the draft budget, so be it. But perhaps you would want to think about taking the end of year funds that you're going to get at the end of fiscal year 2024. As you know, it's usually in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And when that occurs, and you'll know it by July 1st, spend that money on Town Hall. Otherwise, you're giving a message to the town, town residents that to Town Hall is a lower priority compared to other capital projects. And then I think it's the other way around. And I would just finally close by simply reiterating what I said last one. If everything is a priority, nothing is a priority. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there other residents who wish to make presentations? Barbara Pink?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Gotcha. We'll know in just a moment if there's anyone online who wants to make any presentations. No, Darren Welch does not wish to make a presentation. The time is 7:40 and we are ready for the town manager's report.
Thank you. Included in your agenda packet is the financial report for the month of March. Obviously, I think our focus at this point is more looking forward to the FY 2025 budget. The only comment I would like to offer about the March financial report, it's just to note that it does not reflect the adjustments that were authorized by budget amendment number two, the effective date of that ordinance was April 1st. Obviously, this is a financial report for March. So if some of the numbers don't look the way you thought they would, that's the reason why. I would note that the budget ordinance that you'll be considering for introduction later in the meeting does reflect those adjustments. I think as you all are aware, we're bundling a series of infrastructure improvements into kind of one mega bid document. Included in that bid package are, is road paving, installation of a speed bump on Waymouth, the reconfiguration of the Argyle-Kennelworth intersection, and replacement of the section of the Waverly Avenue sidewalk between Montrez and Ken Place Building. Clark Azar, our civil engineering firm, issued a bid package on March 29th. The deadline for bid submissions is April 25th. So I do anticipate that staff will be bringing forward a contract award at the town council meeting in May. According to the bid specifications, all work must be completed by October 4th of this year. Relative to 11321 Kennelworth Avenue, the former Yendel property, during the month of March, Empire Landscape performed work on the property as a precursor to the development of a park on the site. They removed approximately 30 small exotic trees and some non-native shrubs. Additionally, a larger oak tree that was leaning over, one of the adjacent neighbor's house was removed in accordance with the provisions of the deed of conservation easement. The town sought and obtained the consent of the Garrett Park Conservation Trust before proceeding with removing the tree. While they were on site, Empire Landscape also removed bamboo. There are some follow-up treatments that will be necessary for the next few years. Additionally, installation of a bamboo barrier is pending. Relative to the Town Hall renovation, just, we've talked about this before, but just wanted to confirm with the mayor and town council that on March 14th, I did file an application for congressionally directed spending, also known as earmark funding with the offices of Senator Cardin and Senator Van Hollen. They did a joint application process this year. Now, the requested funding amount was 500,000, which was the maximum amount that is allowable under that specific funding category. And as we talked about at the last town council meeting, there does appear to be some conflicting information between the Montgomery Planning Department and the Maryland Historic Trust about our eligibility under this earmark category. As a reminder, the specific funding category for which we submitted an application is the Saving America's Treasures. That does have some very specific requirements. I shared the information with the offices of Senator Cardin and Senator Van Hollen. They told us to proceed with submitting an application. So hopefully we are eligible for that. As a reminder, we won't know kind of the status of that application for sure until fall of this year.
So the, so the senators staffers didn't seem bothered by this conflict of information?
To clarify, I provided them in writing what I had received from the lead staff member for the Montgomery Planning Historic Preservation Office. On that basis, they said to proceed. Pretty much the application was done and the deadline was approaching when Kayla received some different information from Maryland Historic Trust. At that point, the application was, you know, substantially complete. And we had previously shared the information we got from Montgomery Planning. So we shall see. I'm sure what will happen is it will be vetted by the National Park Service, which is actually the, well, it's the National Park Service within the Department of the Interior. So I'm sure they will be reviewing to make sure that we do meet the eligibility requirements. It's kind of a wait and see. Renovation of the town office, which I had something different to say than I have the last month or two. We are still at a standstill as we wait getting the permits from the Department of Permitting Services. As a reminder, the area that is the focus of the permitting is tenant space A, which is the larger of the two former tenant spaces. As I mentioned at last month's meeting, we did have to retain an engineering firm to address certain electrical and plumbing matters that were cited in the DPS review comments. All of that information that was requested by DPS was submitted in March. In talking to our general contractor, once we received their permits, you know, they will work with us to get us back into their schedule, but obviously they have proceeded with taking on other clients. So we'll just have to kind of see when they can get back to us once we actually do get the permits. Just a couple of staffing matters. On March 25th, Oliver Fitch Florist started work as the newest member of our maintenance team. So he's been with us two weeks. He's been a great addition to our staff. In less happy news, our town archivist Claire McDonald, who has been working for us for approximately five years, recently received a promotion at her full-time job, which is certainly good news for her and I'm sure well deserved, but this will require Claire to basically be working on site Monday through Friday for the most part. So she will no longer have the scheduling flexibility that she's had in the past and will be unable to continue on as our town archivist. Thankfully, Claire is giving us several months' lead time and we actually did start that recruitment. So hopefully this will allow for some overlap between Claire and the new archivist to make sure we have a smooth transition. Just in terms of our maintenance team activities, a lot of it's just, you know, kind of putting away the winter equipment and gearing up for spring. They have actually started some mowing work. They're gearing up for the spring tree planting season, including filing a request with utility to mark utilities where the new trees will be planted. They've also been working with Phil Normandy, our consulting arborist, and they've been continuing to work on removal of small invasive trees and shrubs that are located on town-owned property or town right-of-way. And lastly, our maintenance supervisor, George Miller, oversaw the site and drainage improvements at the community center property. This work was being done by DNF Construction. They started work on March 25th, made, have made tremendous progress despite the multiple days of rainy weather. I got an email from DNF this morning saying that the only work that remains is installing the flexi-pave-like material around the, the, one of the large trees near the playground. They do anticipate doing that work midday on Wednesday, and the nursery school has been notified of that. And so that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
You answered my question, but well, I forgot the email. It'd be just a side note, there's leaking frost in the communities down there.
Okay.
So it's the ones on the side by the air conditioners.
Okay.
Don't know, don't know what it is.
Okay, I'll let George know.
But it all looked good. I mean, I went over there and looked at it. It all looked nice.
Yeah, they really mobilized a lot of equipment and they knew that our goal was to try to get as much of the work done during the spring break. Like I say, we would have been done probably no later than April 1st, which was sort of the target date, but for all the rainy weather we've had, but they still made amazingly good progress.
Yeah, it's nice.
I know that the discussion with the possible retention of an attorney to speak with the county regarding the stormwater issue was not part of the formal report, but can you tell us if there's any movement on that?
That, that movement needs to come from you all, and I, I would suggest everyone be limited in their comment because that was a closed session item. There was some discussion just a little bit earlier, Todd, about trying to, no, that's okay, but trying to schedule that discussion. As I indicated, I think you would want to have that discussion in closed session again. So that means probably with the participation of council and I will try to get some dates set up for that. If everyone's in concurrence with, with doing so.
In the next, or so.
Certainly, yeah, we can do that. I think just given the availability of Town Hall, would everyone be comfortable? Maybe doing that meeting virtually, it might open up some, some dates that would otherwise not exist if everyone's comfortable with that.
I mean, I'll hold on a quick second.
So we're just discussing that we need to schedule, Barb's gonna schedule a date with the attorney so that we can discuss what we discussed in closed session to try and come to some conclusion or another. No, we're actually to.
The other consideration that we got to keep in mind is that this, whatever direction we take this is a big, big decision. And given the election that's coming up in a month, that is possible that, that should be, that's something that should be taken into consideration. So we'll, we'll talk more about it. Because it definitely needs to be addressed, but we do it now in a responsible way.
Okay.
Let's see. The time is 7:50. Assistant manager Caleb Bucher, how are you feeling today, ma'am? Thank you for joining us from your, from your sequestered location.
Hi, apologies. I'm feeling better. I regret that I can't be with you all in person tonight, but you do have a staff memo in front of you that I'll be talking you through before asking council to make a decision. As you might gather from the topic, we're talking trash. We're not going to be talking as much trash as the players in March Madness have talked over the past month, but we do need to talk about trash. For current context, in calendar year 2021, the town council awarded a three-year base contract with the option for three one-year extensions to Montgomery County sanitation. This was for twice-weekly rear yard trash collection, once-weekly curbside yard waste collection, once-weekly curbside recycling, and quarterly large item collection. While that contract went into effect on October 1st of 2021 and terminates June 30th of this calendar year, we have seen several amendments to the contract because we have been going through a very volatile time period. To recap the amendments to the contract, we have in fiscal year 2022, we did see a significant increase in the cost of diesel. As I'm sure council is aware, the cost of diesel often moves separate to the cost of standard consumer gasoline. At the time, the contract was amended to provide for a fuel surcharge where if the cost of diesel exceeded $3.60 per gallon, AKA if it was $3.61, but less than $4 per gallon, the town would pay a flat fuel surcharge of $500 to the vendor. If it was more than $4.01 per gallon, but less than $4.49 per gallon, the flat fuel surcharge would be $1,000. We do have an upper limit of $1,500 for when the cost of diesel exceeds $4.50 per gallon. This was initially meant to be only a six-month contract amendment. It was extended, including through the termination date of the existing contract.
Can you tell me real quick, Kayla, when did the, when did we last have to pay this, this surcharge? When, when did the, the cost of diesel exceed $3.60?
We have, I can't say it's been 100% of the time, but it's, it's, we paid it for the month of March, so of this year. So diesel has continued to be higher than the 3.60 a gallon for almost the entire time that the amount has varied. But it's been almost every month since you all initially implemented it.
We did at one point see a slight dip to a lower level of the fuel surcharge, but as Barb notes, the overall cost of diesel has been sufficiently high that I can't recall the last time that we went a month without paying it. Picking back up with the contract amendments that we saw in early 2023, Key San, Montgomery Sanitation did change their name to Key Sanitation. That was in part around the time where there was a transition from the existing owner and manager to the next generation. That was mostly done to keep our paperwork straight. In the beginning of fiscal year 24, AKA taking effect on July 1st, 2023, Montgomery County raised its tipping fee for trash from $60 per tonne to $70 per tonne. This is of note to Garrett Park because we use the Shady Grove Transfer Station as the disposal point of everything that is collected in town. When the contract was originally bid out back in 2021, the bidder did use the existing tipping fees to calculate a base cost for certain elements. Please note that in the current contract, the tipping fees for your standard weekly collection are built in to the base price. The only time we pay a separate tipping fee is for the quarterly large item pickup. It is structured that way because from quarter to quarter, the volume that we send can vary wildly. Not everyone's getting rid of large furniture every three months, not even every year. But back to the tipping fee, that tipping fee led to an increase in the amount of the monthly rate by $577. The current composition of council had been elected and sworn in at the time that this contract amendment was requested. And I do believe council member Eisenstadt, that might have been your first town council meeting where that contract amendment was discussed and where council agreed to authorize it. At that point in time, staff was given the direction to make sure that we put this contract out to bid. Just to make sure that we are ensuring that there is a cost-effective quality service being provided to town residents. Looking at our current rates with Key Sanitation, monthly, the contracted rate is $10,470. As follows, it is $6,804.25 for trash collection, which is again collected twice per week. It is $1,841.10 for once-weekly yard waste collection. And it is $1,825.05 for the weekly recycling collection. As briefly mentioned, we do have a quarterly large item pickup that is handled by our current trash hauler. Currently, we are billed $1,444 per quarter, plus whatever associated tipping fees result from the tonnage we send to the Montgomery County Transfer Station at Shady Grove. On an annual basis, that contracted rate is $131,416. It's worth reiterating, that does not include the tipping fees for the large item because that can vary from quarter to quarter and year to year. It also does not include fuel surcharges. As noted in the staff memo, the request for proposals was issued on February 1st, 2024. There was a request for pricing for two service options. Option A is curbside collection for all services. Option B was rear yard or side yard collection for all services. This was done in part to make sure that we saw a response and to make sure that council had a robust and complete option to look at if they chose proceed with.
Okay, so what about, I mean, I, I don't, I take all of my collection, everything to the curb. So, and I, I'm sure many other people do. Everybody I see around me does. Where's the middle option for, did you ask them for the hybrid of collection at the curb for, for, for some and side rear yard collection for others?
We did not. Part of the motivation to do two very clear-cut options was based on speaking with other municipalities that had recently put their contracts out to bid. As Barb and I were discussing before the meeting started, Chevy Chase Section 3, also within the past, I believe, 18 months, put their contract out to bid and they only received one bidder. I will say that we did speak with town attorney Ron Bolt about whether it'd be an option to go back to ecology, who are the current low bidders for either option, and discuss a mix and match. Legally, that is something that we are allowed to do. Whether or not that is of interest to the bidder, given the increased staffing and training that will need to occur is a different question, but if that is something council so desires after considering all of the options currently presented, that is something they can request staff discuss with ecology.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Sorry, Jerilee had a question.
Yeah, Kayla, so under our current contract, in the contract that the recycling has to come to the curb?
So I struggled to get a bit of a clear-cut answer. In speaking with our town maintenance staff and trying to pick their brains about how things have been handled, what I was told is that at one point, services were added and those services were added at curbside. It was a bit of a, we'll call it mix and match situation, not because that was intentionally how it was structured, but because certain services were added at a delayed time.
So, okay, and just one more question to follow on because I wanted to understand in the questions and answers you got from some of the bidders, did you get the impression that their assumptions might be that even if the bid for side yard or rear yard pickup was that when they were making that bid, do you have the impression that perhaps they were considering it wouldn't be 100% of the houses that would be rear and side, that they were perhaps factoring in that a certain percentage would still be curbside?
I did not get that impression. In the development of this RFP, I did look at RFPs that had been put out by other municipalities, both in Montgomery County and in the broader Maryland context to make sure that we are structuring it in a competitive way. It is, from what I saw, incredibly uncommon to have a mix and match of services in terms of some households being rear yards, some households being curbside. To my knowledge, I think there are currently, and this is again, only to my knowledge, I might be missing details, two other small two other small municipalities in Montgomery County that offer rear yard collection. It is my understanding that all other municipalities have found curbside to be much more cost-effective. I will tell you, um, bidders were told they must submit pricing for both curbside and rear yard options if they wanted to be considered. One of the disqualified bidders, who we will touch upon in a moment, um, chose to only submit curbside collection, but they had been disqualified for other reasons. If they had not been disqualified, they would have been disqualified for failing to turn in a full and complete bid. So I would be very surprised if any bidder had considered a mix and match. The only bidder I think might have considered that would be Key Sanitation, who is our current hauler. When you look at the tables on pages two and three, you will see that Key Sanitation is the second lowest bidder by a rather significant margin, whether you look at purely curbside or purely rear yard, side yard collection.
What's interesting on that is I noticed both Key Sanitation and Sanford Federal use the same numbers for both um curbside and for rear side yard, which makes me wonder whether or not um, we could have gotten a better number out of one of, out of the uh curbside.
Kind of gives an indication to me that maybe Key knows it's only a dozen fa- places, dozen times they have to actually walk up to the side of somebody's house, and so.
Yeah, definitely.
No reason to, to increase that, yeah.
Picked up on the side for like the first two years and never since. I mean, they seem very rarely out of the backyard anymore. It seems like they just stopped doing it.
So it's, so I know, I just wonder if there's any any um reason, I guess they, they didn't really care, but we don't know anything more than what's here, just that they use the same numbers for both.
They might not have read it.
All right, out of Reddit, they might have felt that their staffing and collection costs were going to be flat regardless of whether someone was hopping off a truck and going, you know, fifty feet into someone's yard. Um, as much as I would love to be a mind reader and be able to tell you definitively what the folks building these bid were thinking, I can't unfortunately read their minds. Councilmember Eisenstadt, it looked like you had a question you wanted to ask me?
Yes, um, Ecology in their bid says they will pick up trash at least once a week. Does that mean twice?
That means twice. All services, I will reiterate, are trash being collected twice a week.
Okay.
Yard waste and recycling collected once a week and quarterly large item pickup.
Okay, so they're all the same level of service?
Yes, they were repeatedly emphasized that this is the level of collection and service that we expect.
Okay, okay.
They might have had a typo in their bid, but given that it doesn't come down to the um dollars and cents, I am not concerned that they would reduce service.
Kayla, do these contracts have the same tipping fee additional charge and the diesel fee additional charge?
So the RFP that was put out did outline the existing fuel surcharge structure. Uh, it must exceed three dollars and sixty cents to get anything for a fuel surcharge. If it does, here are the tiers. We also indicated in the request for proposals that they are to look at the Montgomery County tipping fees currently and to use those numbers to guide their bid. As a reminder, the tipping fees are baked into the cost for the weekly collection. It is only for the quarterly large item pickup that they are able to bill us separately for tipping fees.
Well, that seems to be different because if you look on page eight and if I go to the last paragraph in the first part of it, the first sentence, it says for regular collection, tipping fees are paid in addition to the flat collection fee. Am I misreading this? Or because there's a huge gap, a huge, like thirty-seven percent gap between Key and the other folks, and I'm just wondering if this might be part of it or what?
I am, you said it was page eight?
Page, page eight, it's exhibit six, it, you know, attachment one. Um, all the way to the bottom paragraph, and it starts with for regular collection. It appears to be a copy from the one below, which says for quarterly collection, which we all understand quarterly collection is going to be a we're paying extra for the tipping fee, but I'm looking at this and it says pay in addition to the flat collection fee.
Right, so is the big, is the big gap between Ecology and Key Sanitation fifty thousand dollars, is that because Key actually included the tipping fee for regular collection and Ecology did not? As, as this paragraph would indicate.
Exactly, exactly.
I am looking at that now. That language is meant to capture a protective clause for the town, where if Montgomery County in the course of the base contract were to raise its tipping fees, as it did for FY twenty-four in summer of two thousand and twenty-three, the responsive vendor would have to provide notification in writing to the town in order to be able to amend the contract to capture those increased tipping fees.
Agreed, and that's the second part of this, but the first sentence seems to speak to me. I mean, maybe somebody else has got a different read on it, but it seems to say to me the same thing as the quarterly collection, which is that, that they get paid a flat collection fee for picking the stuff up, but then they get paid a tipping fee when they jump.
My understanding of that sentence, and that sentence was reviewed by the town attorney's counsel, so I am fairly optimistic that we don't have something causing a large discrepancy in understanding for the bidders. Is that the flat collection fee is meant to capture the um labor costs, the fuel costs. The final cost provided by the bidder is meant to be whatever they estimate the tipping fee to be. Tip, bidders did ask about the collection numbers from the town of, on an annual basis, how much is collected for trash, how much is collected for yard waste for recycling. Some of those numbers we could not get from Montgomery County Transfer Station, but all bidders were provided with the most recent numbers we could get of how much is generated by the town and use that to calculate their cost.
It would be really helpful to uh to clarify about this uh about if the tipping fee for, for a collection is.
Yeah, what's in and what's out.
Yeah.
I agree.
Specifically ask um Ecology that.
I am happy to reach out to them upon my return to office or potentially earlier if I can swing it to get that clarification.
Thank you.
Now, another thing I had was, and we just touched on it earlier. I just looked up like two seconds ago, I looked up the, the price for diesel this year, last year. Um, AAA like we talked in here. It's right now at like four-ten, it was four-fifteen. But my point here is that we would be in the thousand dollar a month surcharge, and so are we planning on putting, say, an additional ten or twelve K into this to make sure that we're covering, because I don't know how the number was, the final numbers were made.
Yeah, so I can speak to how the number is calculated. So on the first of every month, um, I pull the AAA Gas Index for the Washington DC region, um, because clearly there's differences across the state of Maryland.
Right.
Um, Kayla and I did build into the budget an assumption that fuel surcharges would be paid in FY twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
Is that passed on to residents?
It's part of, all that figures into the total cost of the service and the household assessment fee, yes.
Because I think initially it was just something that we, that we swallowed, that we just.
We started it, um, I believe it was like the spring of twenty twenty-two, I'm thinking. Um, and basically at that point, the rate had been set, so there was no ability to recover that. Just the same way when the county raised the tipping fees, the rate had already been set, so there was no way to recover that cost.
Kayla, I have one more question. Um, the references you checked, were any of those communities, communities that do side and rear yard pickups?
I don't believe any of those communities do rear and side yard as part of their offering package.
Which were the two? Which were the two that, that you said there are two Montgomery County municipalities that do, that offer rear or side yard collection?
Yes, one of them is one of the Chevy Chases. I wish I could tell you which Chevy Chase it was, however, unfortunately, I don't have that information in front of me. The other one, I believe, might be the town of Somerset.
I can't. I can probably help here. Um, the Chevy Chase you're thinking of is Chevy Chase View. Um, they're, they have a hybrid system, their refuse is backyard and their large items, yard waste and recycling are curbside.
And who's, who do they use?
And their praise of Ecology.
Okay, so Chevy Chase View does have part, at least partial a hybrid pickup, and they gave a good reference. That's what I wanted to understand is whether the, we have some experience there for the, for the provider with rear and side pickup.
Okay, you said um Chevy Chase View and Somerset?
I believe Somerset. I don't have that information in front of me. Rather unexpectedly at home tonight, so I'm happy to look into that information and send that out to council as soon as I am able to do so. It might be a day or two delay.
Kayla, did um he report on how many, like side and rear yard pickups they've been doing the last couple of years?
They did not.
Did he ask them for that? Or sort of more or less, I mean, I don't know if they track it, but if they do, it would be useful information.
I am happy to reach out to my point of contact for Key Sanitation to ask if they have it. If they don't track it, I will let council know, and if they do track it, I will share what information I am given.
Just in my, I, I found, there's another, just a minor mistake, it's exhibit five, number seven. Um, it says there's no recycling collected at uh Town Hall where we're sitting and also the community center. For sure, I know Town Hall, you have it.
So I actually spoke with our maintenance staff about where and how they do collection for trash and recycling. What I was told is that maintenance staff will bring the trash and recycling from Town Hall over to be collected from Penn Place to centralize for the current vendor, where they stop to pick it up. That did surprise me as well, but that was part of why I wanted to speak with our maintenance staff about these facilities, because they are non-residential and do have some, we'll call it, unique characteristics. So that was all done with maintenance staff guidance about the collection.
Okay, thank you.
I missed the, the piece of the, in the narration about um, about the non-residential places. Are, are we going to continue with not having pickup at Town Hall and the community center? Is that?
That is.
It assumes?
That is what it assumes. Um, again, I spoke with maintenance staff about how they currently handle collection, particularly because Town Hall is, I think, the biggest example. It can go through high periods and low periods. And I believe over the years, maintenance staff has found it more efficient to bring back the recycling and the trash from that venue to Penn Place, which always has some level of material that needs to be collected.
So I want to raise the scheduling issue. I, I do agree that it's important that we get clarification on this point with the vendor um, on the collection, but at the same time, there's a significant price difference between the two options, and that has a big impact on the current budget that we're planning to introduce tonight. So I'm wondering if we could still have the discussion tonight about our views of the curbside versus the side and rear, setting aside that important question that, that Kayla would get clarified. I recognize we can't approve the award tonight without getting that clarified, but at least we could perhaps vote on whether in general we are pro curbside versus side and rear yard option, because I think that's really an important part of our budget coming.
Let me just clarify, I think I got it, but like what's the difference between the household cost if you, if you're doing it um curb versus side rear yard?
If you flip to page three, you will.
Three ninety-five and four sixty or?
Two and three.
Yes. So generally, you would see an average cost of sixty-five dollars more in the first year to do rear yard versus curbside. Um, that is seventy-seven dollars more in the second year and ninety dollars more in the third year. That's all using the current household assessment of three ninety-five to figure out the increased cost. You see a much lower cost increase for curbside in the three years, if you went to look at that option. It would be the final two paragraphs above the bolded statement timing considerations.
So whose numbers did you use for this chart, Kayla?
Because they are the low bidder and because their references indicated they were qualified, those numbers were calculated using Ecology's.
Okay.
Councilmember Eisenstadt, I saw that you had a question?
Yeah, I, I would like to propose that we get the hybrid formal bid to compete with these curbside versus ba- you know, side and backyard, because it, hybrid seems like the way we're really going to go, right?
Yeah.
Eighty percent of us take our garbage to the curb, but there are some people who are unable to do that and really need the, you know, this other service. So if we were explicit with Ecology about the cost and, and with Key, I guess, and I guess with the other bidders as well.
Well, I mean, we have to give all the vendors the opportunity to respond to that change. That's essentially a change in the RFP, isn't it?
Well, I mean, except that, that regardless, there's a, a significant difference. I mean, either way, whether we do curbside or rear side yard in full, which we're not talking, you know, I don't think we're talking about, we're talking about a hybrid. Either way, we, there's a significant price difference. So, so to one extent, we can just decide, do we, are we good with Ecology and we just need to get a better price from them, which I think Kayla indicated that, that um our legal counsel said we could go to them and say, hey, you know, if we do it a hybrid, because I think, I imagine their rear yard, side yard prices are based on, I mean, it's probably a unit price, it's probably number of households. And so it's not really a bidding thing, it's just, hey, if only, if only fifty households use the rear side yard, then only charge us for fifty, don't charge us for three hundred and fifty. So I don't think it's a bid issue, I think it's just a clarification. We're not using the, so I think we're, we're legally in the clear to go back just to Ecology if we're otherwise going to do the bid anyway.
Although, don't we have more leverage if it's part of the bidding process still?
Uh. I think there also needs to be a point out that our current contract expires um June thirtieth, and we do have a limited timeframe in which council can afford a contract to ensure continuity of service. I am happy to reach out to Ecology. I am happy to confirm again with our town attorney what is within bounds. He did not indicate that we would have to go back to every single bidder that we would be able to approach Ecology and ask for pricing. I will reiterate that I am happy to make that request, but I cannot guarantee Ecology will be interested. I will report back the conversations I have with Ecology and any other relevant context information, including the requests that I approach our current vendor to find out how many households are currently putting out collection at the rear versus curbside.
What do you mean by you're not sure if Ecology be, would be interested? I mean.
Ecology, I hope they would consider doing a hybrid, but it would be, from my understanding, within their rights as a business to indicate we would prefer not to do that and stay something along those lines.
But you don't know either way what they'll do, right? That's hypothetical, yeah.
And I want to make sure council is aware of the hypotheticals. I'm in this conversation with the sincere hope that they would treat us the way they treat um Chevy Chase View and be open to considering it, but I don't want to make a promise that I cannot keep to council, so.
They might want to tell their guys, their labor force, like, go do this, not like if the stuff is there, do that, and if it's, if it's not there, go to the side yard. I mean, it, I can see from a operation standpoint, it would be difficult to operationally tell them exactly what we want them to do.
It's very hard. I think that's what happened to mine. I think I used to have it in the side yard, and I probably put it out to the curb once or twice, and I never took it from the side yard again. So I wonder too, like the, the cost for the, the rear side yard on Ecology is cheaper than the front yard for everybody else.
Right, so I mean.
That's one option, is just get them to just do everybody and then encourage all the residents to do it. I think the flip side of that could be like, what, that it's probably a very small percentage of people left that still do the rear inside yard pickup anyway. Is there any way legally where if people want to opt into a certain, like a program for that, they could just pay an extra to the town and then have their yard marked, so theirs, if it's five percent of the yards, they get it picked up?
So everybody. Point out that the households pay for the service through the annual household collection. I would have to reach out to folks at Montgomery County to ask. I would have to reach out to folks at Montgomery County to ask if we could do something like a, hey, for these ten households, an increased household assessment.
I, I, I can answer that question if I may. The county is not going to do that. Basically, this is one line on a real property tax bill and they bill, there's a fee you pay. So they're not going to do anything that's overly complicated that messes up their real property tax bill.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think God more or less said this, but I think, um, it's an assumption, but I would assume that a lot of the households that choose to do the side and rear yard may choose that for accessibility purposes. It can be heavy and difficult to move things to the curb side. So I look at that, providing that as a service from the town to be making our town more accessible and more livable for our elderly population and those with disabilities. So I, I would hate for us to then put an extra charge on those families in particular.
However, I don't know that I'd be willing to pay for me to have it done when I'm never gonna leave my stuff at the side. I don't want to pay twenty, I don't, I don't want necessarily my, my fee to go up sixty-five dollars for ten people to use it. Not, I'm not saying I don't want to provide the service. I do, but I, I would be really concerned if ecology wasn't willing to reduce it to make it what is actually used.
I don't disagree. I think we should, I like your idea that we negotiate with ecology and glad to hear that the attorney says that that's possible. I just want to like get it out there that, um, I'm concerned about attempting to have individual homeowners pay more for that accessibility service.
Agreed, because I know historically it's been the elderly especially who can't drag trash cans full of stuff out there, you know, or, or those who were otherwise unable to do so. And so we've always done it, but it's, I mean, even on my street, I don't think there's anybody who doesn't put their trash on the curb. So it's gotta be just a handful of people.
So, so can we, we've been doing a lot of these provisional, uh, acceptance, but can we, do we agree that ecology is the way we're gonna go?
Yes.
Regardless?
Well, we don't know yet. We gotta find out what's going on with this.
Taking authorization to negotiate or certain conditions.
Well.
And conditional the hybrid, yes.
Well, but there are, thank you Phil for reminder about the tipping fees. If, if ecology doesn't have the tipping fees included and all of a sudden we have a much more, a, a closer race.
Yes, and if we have a closer race and one of them is willing to charge for twenty percent side and backyard pickup and the other one is not, then they become much more competitive with each other, especially if it's key that it's.
Because they already had the same number for both, so it would be.
They should know how many side and backs they pick up and it's probably twenty percent is probably a lot. It's probably ten, right?
I would think, yes.
Less than that, but even.
But it's important for the people that need it. It is important.
But even, um, ecology's rear and side yard, it's ten thousand, twelve thousand less than Key's.
Right.
Front yard, so it's like.
Or unless they're, unless we have to pay for regular collection, the tipping fee, which is what, that, that, that forty dollars?
Seventy bucks a ton.
Seventy dollars per ton. You know, I mean, like, if, if that is suddenly, that's on top of the low bid.
Then it's the medium.
It changes the.
It changes the bid a lot. Okay, so let's see. So there's no question. We want to get this done as quickly as possible. But, but we, I mean, I, we don't have the information we need. We need to know about this tipping fees for regular collection, if that's included in the price for ecology. We need to know, if, how many, from Key, how many residents use the side yard or the side of rear yard pickup? Um, we need to know, we need to know how ecology will adjust their price knowing that we're, that it's not a hundred percent rear or side yard pickup. Um, I think all three of those things are pretty important for us to know before we can move forward on this. That being said, um, you know, if we were able to get that information in a week, a week from now, would y'all be willing to try to do like a, you know, like a, a quick meeting for just that purpose?
Or we could vote all over email.
We cannot.
You can't. We have to do a meeting, but we could do a hy, we can do a hybrid meeting, right?
We can do an online.
We just do an online meeting.
But we, so.
It would be similar to the meeting that was done in August of twenty twenty-three to authorize the contract amendment, where it's the only agenda item council member would be asked to meet virtually. And ideally, we could have this concluded, provided all the information is received in under twenty minutes.
Okay, so then, so we have a commitment to, to get this approves as soon as we have information, as soon as we have the information approved as quickly as possible.
Right.
Yeah.
On a regular meeting night, Monday.
Not necessarily. No, it would just be whenever we.
Whenever we do, do a little poll or something and then just.
We'll figure it out. Um, was there any, were there any other elements?
I, can we just get it on Exhibit Two? It says at least once a week. Can we just? I know it says twice a week and something else, but if I, I would really feel more comfortable if.
Yeah, that gave me pause as well.
Nailed that one down and just said, had them agree that it's.
I will have them confirm that it's twice a week for trash collection.
And, and change the language too.
Well, but this is their, this was their.
The scope of work can be amended for the actual contract. This is the scope of work that they saw as part of the RFP. So I will ask for their confirmation that they understand that trash is to be collected twice weekly.
Thank you.
Throughout other areas of the RFP.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, thank you, uh, for your work on that and, uh, appreciate your tackling the other pieces when, as soon as you're feeling up to it. As soon as you're back in the office. Let's see. The time is eight twenty-eight and we're moving on to the introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-four dash three. Town manager Matthews.
Thank you. Um, at its meeting on January tenth of this year, the Garrett Park Historic Preservation Committee discussed and agreed to request an amendment to Section four hundred of the town code. The requested amendment would authorize the committee to appoint no more than three individuals as adjunct members. Um, included in your agenda packet is a, a draft ordinance that would effectuate that change. As drafted, the ordinance would not require adjunct members to be Garrett Park residents. That was a specific request of the, um, of the committee. Um, I did want to share with you that Nancy Walz, who many of you know is the chair of the Historic Preservation Committee, um, shared that the committee does not have any immediate plans to name anyone as an adjunct member. Rather, the committee would like to ensure that it has the option to do so based on the committee's needs in the future.
So I want to give a little bit of a background, um, for how this conversation started, at least I think. Um, and that was when Historic Preservation Committee had a, had an open spot and a few people volunteered for it. Um, and conversations that Nancy Walz had with those folks. I think, I think one or two of them were really interested in doing heavy lifting work of the committee. And another one of them maybe had a lot of background information, a lot of, um, historical knowledge that would have been beneficial to the committee, but maybe wasn't so much up to doing the heavy lifts of committee. And so the idea that Nancy raised was, you know, hey, wouldn't it be nice if we could have a way of informally um, or formally recognizing somebody with institutional knowledge and having them be part of the committee, but in an adjunct way. So that's kind of how it started, was just a desire to, um, to keep folks engaged who have lots of information they can pass on for future use.
My only question is, why do they not have to be Garrett Park residents?
They don't have to be, because someone outside Garrett Park may have the expertise.
Is that, I, I mean.
I was sort of thinking like the, um, the town arborist doesn't live, he lives in Kensington. So if there's ever a similar case like that, that, that wouldn't close the door to such a person.
Okay, so is the arborist, is Phil Normandy? But he's not a member of the committee.
No.
And is, is Claire McDonald a member of the committee?
No, she is not.
So it's not, it's kind of apples to.
Right.
Apples for oranges. So it's not quite the same thing.
Right, but, I mean, I don't know the specifics of what the committee is contemplating, but I could envision that they might seek particular expertise that maybe somebody who's associated with University of Maryland could provide. And maybe they don't live in Garrett Park, but they happen to be interested in Garrett Park's historic district and they're willing to volunteer their time. Why would we not accept that volunteer time?
Unlikely it'll happen, but it could.
The authority of these adjunct members seemingly has to do with the work of the committee and the committee's budget as allocated by the council, right? I mean, that, and that's all the talking about here. I mean, they, that, that committee doesn't have any influence in any, who knows, at any annual.
No. They can't spend money.
Right.
It's a very limited budget, but it's usually for initiatives, kind of like the Chevy House.
Right.
Or, um, some other research initiatives. It's not nearly as big of a budget as Arboretum, say, or even Archives.
Does the town collect, um, conflict of interest forms from committee members? What, they would be non-voting, right?
They would be non-voting. They would be non-voting.
Votes that are, no, they have conflicts.
Pretty rare that there's a really consequential vote. Usually it's more trying to add information to various of the things that the town is doing, so, um, I can't remember the last time there was a contentious vote on anything.
So it doesn't seem like we're, there's much to lose from doing this, right?
Uh, and the, the big thing that was gained is there are quite a few people that served for a very long time on the Historic Preservation Committee, so they tend to pick up a lot of knowledge about things that have happened in town over time and e- even if it's more recent and it's, um, like a house that maybe was reviewed and a certain thing came up with maybe the way a setback was treated or porch materials or windows. Um, they kind of have that institutional knowledge and they may not have the time to do it, um, to do it full-time, but they could still kind of pitch in with that.
Sure.
Back history.
More like an emeritus, like a, a committee member.
The way, yeah, that's the way I pitched it. It was like kind of an emeritus, but I guess that kind of rules out somebody that may may be willing to do it kind of part-time and it would only limit it to people that, you know, maybe had a very long history on it. So we've had a couple of members that were on it. Like when I first joined it, it was it was myself and Nancy Schwartz and Marilyn Green and Perry Chapman. And a lot of them, they, they had so many years and so much like history just in their heads of, you know.
Seems like a reasonable thing to do.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things though that I'd like to see about adding and one is that there'd be a, uh, I'm just copying this essentially from paragraph three, all members shall be appointed for a term of, and we limit, we have just a term limit. I mean, it could be three years, could be two years or whatever, whatever anybody wants. Um, the second one is a member may be removed for failure to attend meetings regularly or for misconduct. I just think that's a safety clause that we should throw in there for whatever need.
So, wait, I'm. So those things are in there. I don't understand.
Those are not in the adjunct members portion. I'm saying that we should add them to the adjunct members portion. Cause the, the adjunct members portion is the bolded and underscored.
Gotcha.
And so I'm believing we could just copy that stuff. I mean, if somebody else wants to propose a different term, I don't care. I just think we should put a term on there. Make up whatever you want. And I do believe that we should put in about the member may be removed for failure to attend meetings or misconduct.
Misconduct.
I think it's, it's, would only be reasonable. I mean, everybody else is subjected to it.
It's okay with me.
And the last thing would be, does anybody care if the council does or does not review these people? Normally for the members, for the full members, mayor, the mayor proposes, council accepts. Do we want to do council accepts or don't we care?
I think it should be the same. They just, it's probably not gonna be that common that it's gonna change over.
They don't have a vote.
I, I think it's fine, but that does bring up another issue. I, I think there should be a requirement that the committee notify the, the mayor and council of the additional members, because that's currently not stated.
Well, if it's going to have a term, if there's going to be a, a term for the person to be part of this group.
Right. I'm just suggesting we add a sentence that the committee will notify the council and mayor within thirty days, the town office, council and mayor within thirty days of appointments.
So the town council doesn't have to approve these people. We just have to be told who they are.
Well, what about, I'm recommending. Well, what about instead of appointing three, up to three adjunct members, what about nominate? Nominate for, that's another option. I mean, like the mayor could just approve that or it could come to council, but nominate, I don't know. I mean, there's something about, you're giving it a term, if there's something official, even if they're not voting. Um, so then, so then really we're changing it to the mayor making an appointment. Because currently the council doesn't make the appointments.
Right.
Right. It would still, I would still see it as being, I guess they could, I, I don't know, I don't care either which way. Right now they've got as chair and vice chair, maybe it's just approved by the council, but I don't care.
Maybe that, maybe that someone official, the mayor should do that, right? Should approve these.
Well, right now it says the Historic Preservation Committee to appoint the adjunct members. So we're saying we're gonna change that?
To the ma, mayor will.
Right, like the ordinance, you're saying the ordinance that we're introducing.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
So we'd be doing include adjunct members, not to appoint.
We could add it at the bottom of the mayor's paragraph instead and say, upon recommendation of the committee, the mayor may.
Works for me.
Yeah.
The mayor shall point, okay.
Or shall approve.
Yeah, the mayor shall approve.
Right.
Upon nomination by the committee.
Right.
Barb, are you catching these?
I'm doing my best. I, I think you shouldn't want, whoever makes the motion to introduce should probably recap what changes you've agreed upon, because that's the ordinance that actually is being introduced, not what's in your packet.
Okay.
Do you want to introduce? You want me to introduce?
Okay. So. I, there's something, I don't know why, but there's something that feels like it kind of needs, you know, if this is part of the committee and if it's gonna have terms, that it needs some level of formal approval.
It shouldn't be different than any of the other, whether there's what, seven archives, there's seven arboretum, there's already five of this, that's nineteen, number twenty-two.
Yeah, there's no reason to treat three different than the other.
Just because of adjunct.
Agreed. Let's keep it simple.
Okay.
Make a motion.
So is the idea to, to, so the idea is just to treat it? I mean, so then couldn't we put that into just paragraph three? Um, like incorporate that, that adjunct into the others and just say all members voting and adjunct?
Uh.
Or?
We could, but the easy, the, the easier way might be to just do number, number six, just say the chair and vice chair. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, the adjunct committee, the mayor may appoint up to three adjunct members with committee nomination or after committee nomination to assist the committee with its work. Adjunct members.
So I think we have the gist. I think we have the gist of, of what it is, is they nominate. And do we want to do?
Yeah, mayor points.
Do we?
I mean, mostly rubber stamp, but I wonder if it's simplest, just make all the, the new stuff just go to a seven, number seven. It's like, they're just, it's just different, so.
Or number six.
Okay, I think as long as we, as, I think as long as we get the gist and we know what, what the essence is, I, I'm okay with letting Barb banagle the language.
Well, just, it's curious, I mean, we could straight copy number three and just make a couple tweaks with the exception that um, do we need, do we care if they are members of residents of the town? Cause we could just strike the part about, um, you know, from among town residents and we could just leave that out and then the rest of it, you could pretty much just copy it.
Yeah, I mean, if I may, I mean, I think Stephen's suggestion maybe to move this to a seven is a good one, just to kind of, kind of separate the thoughts. As I understand it, in terms of the language that is bolded and underlined, proposed to be added, you want to have, the committee can nominate, but the adjunct members would be appointed by the mayor. Is that correct? You want to make sure that adjunct members can also be removed for failure to attend meetings regularly or for misconduct.
And we're gonna say the term.
And that you want a three, maximum three-year term, or a term of three years.
Yes.
Do you?
Is that correct? Is that everything?
Do we want three years? I mean, if somebody's saying that's what.
The others are three.
Okay.
And so we, we need to approve this though. We do that at the next meeting? We have to introduce this meeting and then approve it the next?
Um, you can, you can do one of two ways. You can either introduce it with those, the changes that have been discussed and go, you know, then I'll bring it back, just as I did with the real estate disclosure ordinance, for example. Um, if you would be more comfortable with actually, um, seeing those changes incorporated before you vote to introduce, that's certainly fine as well.
I mean, I don't. One or two words to change.
Right.
It's not that hard. For the introduction tonight.
All right, so we, um, so who would like to introduce this ordinance? Don't all race.
Okay, so I'll introduce it. I would like to introduce ordinance number. Uh, twenty twenty-four dash three, authorizing HPC adjunct members. Uh, and with the um. Addition is early, I'm certain, with the uh modifications that we've made, meaning that it would include. Uh, membership term, uh, member may be removed for failure to attend a meeting. And that uh it will be the mayor who will do the appointing, the committee will suggest. I believe I covered everything.
And they don't have to be residents of Garrett Park.
Okay, yep, they don't have to be residents.
Six, right?
Make six, it's gonna really become seven. I think it's, she's right. I mean, definitely is right on that one.
All right.
I'll second that.
Second. I was in favor of introducing this ordinance. Okay, excellent. Um. Thanks. Okay, time is eight forty-two. We're moving on to introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash four. Town manager Matthews. Okay.
Okay, I'm just gonna kind of provide some highlights and then turn it over to all of you for a discussion. Um. One of the things I just wanted to start with, and I believe we've talked about this before, but a budget isn't just a series of numbers. Underlying those numbers. Um, is a reflection of what your priorities are for the community. As you all know, because you were there, you held a special town council meeting on October thirty-first. Um, among the items that you discussed was your shared vision for the town and your priority for the next one to two years. Those, the following priorities were what you agreed upon. One was to complete the town hall renovation, create a long-term capital plan, evaluate the structure of town committees. Update the town charter and the town code, renovate, redesign Cambria Park and the open space near the pool property. Establish a system for communication with the town council and residents and to complete the Waverly sidewalk project. Um, just wanted to start with a kind of an overview of the FY twenty twenty-five budget. Um, total revenues are just over two point one million. Um, I think I caught most of you when you came in. As I was preparing this, I realized that there was a typo in the actual staff memo. The number was a little bit understated, so this is the correct revenue number. The estimated FY twenty twenty-four carryover is a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Barb, on your budget, there was a three hundred and twenty-seven thousand in the year, you know, the. The hundred and ten, there were, in the carryover, there were a few different numbers and I didn't understand why.
Um, the three twenty-seven.
Ten, not three twenty-seven.
Yeah, the three twenty-seven, zero, three, six, Lisa, was the carryover from FY twenty-three to twenty-four.
Okay.
The FY twenty-five of a hundred and ten thousand is what I'm, my best estimate.
So what happened to the carryover from twenty-three to twenty-four?
It became a revenue.
Okay.
And you've allocated it.
So that's already included.
That's already allocated in the twenty-four budget.
Okay.
Um, one of the things I did want to note, um, in that revenue figure of roughly two point one million dollars. Um, included in that is the anticipated state reimbursement for, this is a formal name, uh, the Yendel Park Creation Project. Or Yendel Grove, um, so included in that two point one million is a anticipated two hundred and fifty thousand dollar reimbursement from the state. That funding is is um basically earmarked for that project. Operating expenses are roughly one point five six million. Um, there is a transfer to the capital budget, um, roughly four hundred and seventy-four thousand. Uh, once again, that figure does include the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In-state reimbursement for Yendel Grove. Um, there would be a transfer to the reserve accounts of roughly seventy-six thousand dollars. We've talked about this on a number of occasions, but highway user revenue. Um, it's used as restricted by state law. And if there is not a project um that it had allocated for, um, it can be reserved for up to ten years. Also, the Verizon paid capital funds that we get um from Montgomery Municipal Cable via the franchise agreement. Those ones also um are restricted in terms of what they can be used for. I want to talk just for a few minutes about real property tax revenue. This is our, in most years, um, is our largest town revenue source. Um, all town property was reassessed in calendar year twenty twenty-three. Um, any increase in new market value is phased in over the next three tax years, that is state law. So FY twenty twenty-five um is the first year of that three-year phase in period. The net assessable real property base um that I use for budget projections is based on the um twenty twenty-four constant yield tax rate certification that comes from the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation. Uh, based on that information, our net assessable base uh is projected to increase by about nine point six million or three point one two percent. Um, based on your discussion at the meeting you held at the end of February, um, the budget does not contemplate any change in our um local tax rates. Um, our real property tax rate, as a reminder, is um zero point, zero point two, zero, four, five per hundred dollars of assessed value. Uh, based on the um information provided by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation and maintaining the current property tax rate. That would yield real property tax revenue of about six hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Um, I did want to note, um, even though the tax rate is staying the same, the town is gaining some revenue just from the increase in assessments.
Barb, where's the DARPA money?
I mean, the, um. That basically is part of the capital budget.
Okay.
And then.
Nothing getting added. There's nothing added this year for that.
Okay, yes, that's been all received.
Okay.
Um, local income taxes, we've talked about this a lot in recent years, um. In most years, um, FY twenty twenty-four is unusual. Um, this is the second largest town revenue source that is very common for most municipalities, and we have very few ways as local governments to raise money under Maryland law. So to clarify what this is, um, counties can assess what is referred to as a piggyback income tax. Um, this is on top of the state income tax. Um, the maximum amount that a county can levy as its income tax is three point two percent. That is the rate that Montgomery County um. Has chosen, as have many counties across the state. So we receive on, by state law, seventeen percent of the county income tax proceeds. Um, that are attributable to Garrett Park residents. Um, as we've talked about on many occasions, income taxes under the best of times are a difficult revenue source to accurately project. That process has been further complicated by the pandemic and things that occurred. There were. Um, special payment provisions um under the pandemic and payments made to both individuals and corporations. The filing deadlines were extended um without any penalty for um choosing to take advantage of those extensions. And compliance efforts were largely suspended um during the pandemic and have only recently resumed. Kind of put this in perspective, um, I basically have a spreadsheet. I just watched uh income tax receipts from month to month. So if you go back between the time period of FY two thousand nineteen and FY twenty twenty-three. We had a low of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand to a high of almost six hundred and forty thousand. That six hundred and forty thousand dollar number uh represents FY twenty twenty-three. I would note that that is a hundred thousand plus more than the next highest year. Um, we recently amended the FY twenty twenty-four budget, um, and one of the adjustments was income taxes. That number is now set at seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Year-to-date through March, income tax revenue stands at six hundred and seventeen thousand. I think it is possible, basically, if certain trends follow the way they have in the past, that that number of the seven hundred and forty that is. Could be exceeded. One of the things I want to note about FY twenty twenty-four, and we've talked about this a while back. Is we got an unusually large payment in November of twenty twenty-three. Um, there were two components to that payment. One of those was a reconciling distribution for tax year twenty twenty-two. When you look at what's happening in FY twenty twenty-four, the major driving factor of that increase is a three hundred thousand dollar reconciling payment that we received in November twenty twenty-three. That's what's driving it. It's hard to get a lot of information from the state, but one of the comments they made in their transmittal that goes to all governmental entities, counties and localities. Is that in oft, many cases, those who took advantage of the filing deadline extensions. Uh, basically came down to a handful of very wealthy taxpayers and you can have one or two returns really just skew the patterns, and there has been no pattern the last couple of years. Basically, for FY twenty twenty-five, what is in your budget currently is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, you can argue that is conservative. I would probably agree it may be, but I think it's a lot easier for you all to adjust your budget later. Um, rather than base your spending on something that may or may not materialize. Um, I think if anyone can say that they can guesstimate income taxes. And I can guarantee you, they wouldn't be working for any county or local government. They would be a high-paid consultant um to those entities who are trying to figure it out. Um, it's kind of switching to state of Maryland revenues.
Oh, Barb, before you move on.
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to make sure I understood. The the basis for us increasing, can you just remind us? The, at the mid-year point, we adjusted our budget to seven hundred and forty thousand.
Basically, year-to-date revenue largely driven by that very large reconciling payment for tax year twenty twenty-two.
So it's making up for previous years filings not having.
Right. I understand that, but was that our assumption that that would continue?
No.
Or just that we got that bump up for that one year?
We got that.
I thought we would continue to get regular payments throughout.
Correct. What I did is, um, and I can take this down if I need to, but I basically track by month to month. Typically, there are. Patterns where the state will distribute a third of a certain amount, oh, you know, one month, a third of an amount, another month. Basically, what I did is I looked at year-to-date um income tax revenues, looked at the lowest point we had for the remaining months in a fiscal year. Um, and added that. I will say that in February, the payment that we received, I'm going off memory here, was a hundred and. Thirty-three, hundred and thirty-four thousand. Um, typically what you receive in February is mirrored in what you get in May. Which is part of kind of the state pattern of kind of releasing money. Um, that's why I say if that, if that pattern continues. And it always has in recent years, um, that's where that seven hundred and forty thousand dollars could possibly be exceeded.
Okay, but we don't expect that bump-up payment that we got in November to repeat, be repeated in FY twenty-five, because that was a reconciliation.
Yeah, and there are periodically reconciling payments. I think what happened is with the the extension of the filing deadlines. And no penalty for choosing to extend. Many people said, well, why would I pay it? When I can hang on to my money and invest it. And um I think the pattern of reconciling distributions has become. Much more dramatic and the amounts are much more significant. Um, but that November payment is basically what we received in November of twenty twenty-three. Solely as a reconciliation payment is almost as much as we received in certain fiscal years. And the state specifically broke that amount out. What was a reconciling payment and what was sort of the regular, normal distribution?
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Um, so state of Maryland revenue um in total is roughly three hundred and twenty-four thousand. There are three components, um, two state revenues in the FY twenty twenty-five budget. One is highway user revenue, which we've. As we've discussed before, um, there are very specific uses under state law, um, road paving being one of them, sidewalk construction are among those. Um. There is also the anticipated um S H A reimbursement for the town's maintenance of straff more, um, where that M O U stands, because that's very relevant to um. Tree pruning. Uh, we've exchanged a couple drafts since your meeting, I believe it was in January. Um, the last issue to be worked out is um some indemnification language with some changes that Ron Bold has requested. Uh, one of the issues that you had talked about before was wanting clarification and something like, specific language that states that. S H A would still be responsible for removal of any dead, dying diseased or, um, in many cases, trees hit by a car. Um, Stephen knows all too well. Um, they did agree to add that language, so that is specifically the the current draft of the M O U. Um, the other part of the state revenue, really what is driving this number up in FY twenty twenty-five is the anticipated state reimbursement for um Yendel. Um, and just as kind of a reminder, there are two components of state funding for Yendel. One is the Community Parks and Playground Program Grant, which is um. Roughly a hundred and ninety-seven thousand and then also program open space funds. Um, we have obviously incurred some project costs that are um grant-eligible. The state understandably prefers to, these are reimbursement programs, um, both of these are. Um, prefers to basically accumulate um kind of some higher amounts, so they're not kind of distributing money. There's obviously processing time on their part. And so we do have some costs that we incurred um this fiscal year that will actually be um eligible for reimbursement in FY twenty twenty-five.
Barb, you said that's two fifty in total?
Yes, the total amount of the reimbursement.
And that's committed or that's hoped for?
Uh, no, um, the grant's been approved and the program open space funds, those have all been approved by the Maryland Board of Public Works.
We haven't received the funding, right?
We have to apply.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to basically submit reimbursements, and that's what I was saying, Stephen, is um. I reached out to them, because there's obviously processing time on my part, there's processing time on the state's part, so we're going to, they prefer to do as. Few reimbursements as they can just to ease the processing burden, um, which is understandable.
So the programs told us we could have the money, but we have to go through public works.
We already have gone through Maryland Board of Public Works. I actually have written approval that um it's gone through them.
Okay, so it's committed, it's just that the work has to get done and you get, you submit your bill, you get reimbursed for it.
Right.
But we can count on.
We can count on it, yeah. It's it's already gone through. I believe that was in December or January.
Okay, thanks. So it sounds like it's one ninety-seven and one program and fifty-three in the open space.
Right.
Okay.
Um, county tax duplication, um, this is, as was mentioned earlier, this is um reimbursement for services that the county would otherwise provide. The rate of reimbursement is um the county's calculated cost. Not the municipality's cost. Um, in March of twenty twenty-two, um, the county passed, uh, county council passed expedited bill two twenty-two. Um, this bill was enacted to deal with longstanding problems with tax duplication. Um. It was a controversial issue when I started working in the state in two thousand and four, a little less controversial now, but not entirely gone away. Um, so what expedited bill two twenty-two, two dash twenty-two did is it codified um certain tax duplication formulas for service areas. Um, it also kind of clarified the timeline for certain reimbursement activities. Um, provided for a phase and implementation period, um, the county has had an unfortunate tendency when they have rough financial times of. Um, cutting into municipal tax duplication, um, so they, the bill actually had um kind of a phase into full funding. Um, with the full funding goal achieved in FY twenty twenty-five. We currently receive a payment for road maintenance. Um, some of you may recall. Um, that there is a provision in the county code that allows municipalities to essentially submit a request for new payment categories. Um, for reasons I I am not entirely clear on, um, Garrett Park has not been receiving a payment for park maintenance. Um, we, I submitted requests um in both in November of twenty twenty-two, November of twenty twenty-three, those are the um. Codified deadlines um to do so is by November fifteenth of the preceding year. Um, basically, both of those requests were denied by the county executive's office, by the county executive, I guess you could say, by extension. Um, the reason for, their stated reason, um, and I I have some familiarity with this, so they started making park park maintenance payments back in the nineteen eighties. At this juncture, nobody knows what the original basis for those those amounts back in the eighties were. Since that time, those amounts have been adjusted by, have been adjusted by an inflationary factor. Um, and basically expedited bill two dash twenty-two essentially took the most recent park maintenance payment amounts for those municipalities to receive it. And once again, um, kind of built in this phase and implementation period, and then there's now language in the county code that says it will continue to be. Um, bumped up by an inflationary factor. The problem when you come in, as we have, and you're trying to get a new park maintenance payment, is no one actually knows what to do with it. So I have um. Shared with both the Office of Management and Budget, there is a staff person who was assigned to tax duplication, as well as um a staff member in the county executive's office. That there was discussion of um a formula that most of the municipalities agreed to there, um, during Ike Leggett's. Tenure as county executive, he appointed a task force of county staff, as well as municipal representatives, of which I was one of them. Um, we talked about a formula to actually, you know, figure out how. Um, park maintenance payment should be calculated going forward. Needless to say, anytime you talk about money between county and municipalities, um. There, there is a lot of disagreement. I don't believe um. The cap, that report, you know, it's kind of submitted, we all had our versions back and forth, but. Essentially, there is a basis for doing this if the county executive's office wants to do it, and what we had suggested was that. It mirrored the process that the county uses for road maintenance payments. So what they do is they take. Their average of the preceding three years for park maintenance, what we had kind of tentatively all agreed to is that. We would work with Montgomery Parks, we would use their classification system for each of the municipal parks, you know, because there are different types of parks within the county system that have different. Maintenance needs. Um. Basically, the county executive's office has, and then the Office of Management and Budget have just not done anything with this. So the mayor will be testifying before the county council tomorrow. Um, to kind of talk about the unfairness of this, and I. um, to kind of talk about the unfairness of this. I, and I have certainly, um, shared our displeasure with Councilmember Stewart, who had nothing to do with the County Executive's budget, but just that this seems very unfair. Um, that we're sort of caught in something that the County Executive's Office, um, arguably could resolve if they so chose to do so.
But instead, we're going to ask the County Council to rectify the situation by bumping it up in their budget. And what they approve, so.
Yeah, I don't know if they will, but certainly doesn't hurt to try, and appreciative of Joanna's efforts to try to get this resolved.
Are there any other municipalities that are fighting that fight, or?
Yeah.
Or, or are they unaware of it?
Um, I think Joanna might be able to speak to this, but I think there's been some discussion among the, um, Montgomery Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League. Um, you know, there are a number of small municipalities who are getting this payment, who arguably have less, uh, parks and open space than we do. Um, I know Chevy Chase, Section Three gets a payment. Um, the county's interest, I'm a little surprised they haven't tackled this. I think they, the staff, key staff person who's been working on this, um, or assigned to work on it, looked at what one of the municipalities was receiving. It is a, a fairly high number. Um, I, I don't know enough about what they have in terms of their system. Um, but I think that, at one point at least, the County Executive's Office expressed interest in doing it, because I think they believe that some municipalities were being overpaid in terms of what they're receiving.
Oh, I think we're the only ones who've requested.
Yeah, to my knowledge, we are.
What makes us an anomaly at the moment is not that we're the only municipality that has parks that are eligible or that, that are, that should be eligible, but we're the only ones who've actually applied and not got.
Okay.
So.
But some other municipalities are getting it.
They've been getting it for a number of years.
But we've never applied for it.
We've, we, uh, we applied in two thousand and twenty-two when, when this legislation passed. Since then, we've been applying.
Right.
And the county executives just, they've not.
Yeah.
Kind of ignored, so.
And actually, I had applied before this legislation passed, just because I had familiarity with tax duplication. Um, yeah, like I say, it's been an issue for a while, so. You know, I, there are a number of municipalities who receive it. The other thing, in order to have tax duplication, um, y- your residents have to basically be paying the metropolitan tax. So obviously, if your residents, and there are municipalities whose residents do not pay the metropolitan tax, that's, um, it's a function of state law. Um, so if you don't pay, if your residents aren't paying the metropolitan tax, then there is no duplication. Um, so some of the municipalities are also not eligible. Rockville, for example, is, is a community where their residents do not pay the metropolitan tax.
But we pay it.
We, yes, residents here do.
Hoping to get some money out of the county in this budget. But if not, I think we're on a running start to really try to get this fixed for, for next year. But in the meantime, we're spending a lot of money on our parks.
And not being reimbursed.
And not getting reimbursed, and paying twice essentially.
Um, so I'm going to go through this slide pretty quickly, given the discussion. So, um, I think you're well aware now about the, um, the household sanitation fee. Um, and obviously, so for budgetary purposes, and this will be a number that sort of essentially goes, you know, in on the revenue side, out on the expense side. Um, so this is a fee that is placed on the real property tax bills. Um, you know, for budgetary purposes, because you all had not yet had your discussion, I had to assume something. Um, so basically, what is currently in the budget and obviously subject to change, um, is that I assumed a contract award to ecology services for curbside collection of all items that translates to an annual household assessment of three eighty-eight. Once again, this is not a, a challenging number to change, once you all have made a contract award. Um, just very quickly, um, just a couple other revenue categories. So, um, we've always been getting gangbuster and investment revenue, so that's been the, the good part about having high interest rates. Um, uh, this year, that figure is at a hundred thousand. Um, you know, sooner or later, you think rates have to come down at some point. Um, I don't see that happening in the immediate future, but perhaps towards the end of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Um, we also have some, you know, some large capital projects that are either in process, such as the town office renovation or the bid that is currently out on the street. So there will be, you know, arguably an outflow of some cash. Um, Penn Place Rent, um, the lease, uh, the town's lease with Black Market Bistro actually, um, is up in a couple months. Um, I've had some very, um, preliminary conversations with Barbara Black about the lease um, for the time being, until those negotiations are completed. Um, I have held lease revenue uh, flat, because I think it would be presumptuous for me to put something in there that, um, we have not actually fully negotiated, I will say, and I have shared this with, uh, with Barbara Black. Um, the indication is that the current rates they are paying are below market, um, for restaurant rates in the area. Um, we also invested in having, um, kind of, there, it's called BOMA calculations, but it's essentially what we did for this building, um, in terms of having an actual LiDAR, um, survey done of Penn Place to get accurate. Um, square footage measurements, the square foot, square feet that was used in the existing lease, which dates back twenty years. Um, we're also slightly off. Um, so all of this has been, and shared with Barbara. Um, but as I said, I think at this point, I think the prudent thing to do is just to hold revenue flat until those negotiations are completed.
And their lease, the black market lease is going to continue to use the space that they're using for storage on the
Correct.
third floor.
Correct.
Would anything else change? Because I, I don't know if it was correct or not, but I, and heard a couple of years ago, when we were working on something over there, that they, they had the hallway, like where, where art galleries happen, or art, those happen in their lease, but then the front porch that they were actually using was not.
So there's, um, under the, 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 the existing lease, um, basically indicates what is the restaurant usage, and that does not include the hallway for dining. Um, I think also, if you start doing dining in the hallways, that can also start widening the, um, passageways to a point that may, in some cases, may become code problematic. Um, the existing lease basically says that they have non-exclusive use of the porch. Clearly, they have exclusive use of that, um, which was one of the other things when we did the measurements. Um, we basically have an option of that square footage, which once again will be a discussion point.
Yeah, I guess my question was more like, will the new lease, it'll reflect what they, what actually happens versus?
I think it will reflect what actually happens, and more importantly, in some instances, what should be happening. Um, we have had some, some difficulties in some cases that I don't think it's appropriate to say tonight, but I've talked to Barbara about that needs to be rectified. Um, um, other receipts, I just want to mention, um, for anyone who isn't that familiar with the town budget and sees that number going down. Um, in FY two thousand and twenty-four, we had an insurance reimbursement for a car that took out some light poles on Strathmore. Um, we also, for, um, several years, have been getting, um, pandemic-related expense reimbursement with the, um, the pandemic emergency declaration, federal emergency declaration, um, having come to an end, um, last year. And we also believe we've received the final reimbursement in FY two thousand and twenty-four. Um, just kind of moving on to operations, um, a lot of this will be familiar to you all. Um, we had a longtime staff member who retired in May two thousand and twenty-two. Um, for all of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three and part of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, we've used a, a, um, both a mix of contractual and staffing resources. Um, as authorized in the FY two thousand and twenty-four budget, we hired a new maintenance staff member, um, in late March two thousand and twenty-four. The budget actually, um, original budget contemplated six months of contractual services, six months of staffing. We were just a little bit behind, behind in starting that recruitment. Um, the FY two thousand and twenty-five budget proposal reflects a full year with three maintenance staff members, which has been, um, historically was the staffing level in maintenance. Um, the budget includes a wage adjustment for town staff of three percent. Um, we participate in the county, a number of the county benefit programs, including health insurance. Um, this year, we did see an increase, um, health insurance just generally goes up, even if you're up the scale of Montgomery County. Um, so I have included an anticipated increase as of January first of two thousand and twenty-five of seven percent for health insurance only. I've helped down on vision rates, um, stable, flat, because that's what they, they historically have been under, in almost every situation I've ever been involved in. Um, you've probably noticed in terms of I, IT operations, um, the funding has gone up. Um, one of the things we've been talking about internally and also have been talking with our IT consultant about is there are some gaps in the town's disaster recovery, recovery preparedness. Um, also, back in two thousand and twenty-two, this was probably one of the bills that, um, every municipality seems to have been. Um, many still don't, aren't even aware of its existence, but, uh, Senate Bill seven fifty-two, which was passed in two thousand and twenty-two, um, basically established minimum cybersecurity standards for local governments in the state. Um, it wasn't widely talked about. Um, the reason I came to find out about it is Joanna got something from the um, State Information Technology Department, um, that she kindly forwarded on, which basically said we had a, a report we had due within a matter of weeks. Um, but basically, there is, in this legislation, um, there is no scaling of, of risk among municipalities. And I, what I would say by that is the city of Westminster, where I worked before coming to Garrett Park, um, has a police department. They run a water plant, they run a sewer plant, they're doing utility billing, they have a lot of customer account information. Um, arguably, their cybersecurity risk is much greater than Garrett Park, that does not offer those services. There is no distinction, um, between a Westminster and a Garrett Park under Senate Bill seven fifty-two. Um, so we are not fully compliant with, um, what those minimum cybersecurity standards are, and we do have an obligation under state law to, um, become compliant. Um, town committee requests, we talked about these at your meeting in late February.
Vaughn, I had a question about IT operations. Um, how much of those additional costs are one-time, get us up to compliance cost versus recurring costs every year? Yeah, is this one hundred and ten thousand that you're proposing, this is our new normal and, and, and?
And, um, there will be some that will vary from year to year. So one of the, um, the requirements of Senate Bill seven fifty-two is that you have a, an independent party. Basically, it's not just us assessing whether or not we're meeting the mandates, it's an independent party. I will say, just as a matter of good practice, having a periodic third-party security assessment um, is something, a, a good thing to do. So that third-party security independent assessment, there is funding for that in FY two thousand and twenty-five. I would not see that recurring every single year, but it's probably something we should do every couple of years. Um, and then you will also see fluctuations from year to year, just depending on when, um, you know, equipment comes to you for replacement. So I, I, I will put together something for you, um, and send that out, and we can talk about that in more detail at your next meeting. Um, but when you look back, because I certainly did and wondered, you know, it was, was much lower. Um, I don't have, like I said, I have, I can look up the date, but I can't do it while the screen is up, but, um, prior to the years that are shown on the budget sheet in terms of historical data, there was one year where the town basically wholesale replaced, you know, laptops, desktops, things like that. We've tried to get it to a point of staggering it, so not everything is hitting, um, the same year. But you, you will see some fluctuations for a variety of reasons. Um, late March, you all, um, requested, directed that we fund all town committee requests, um, at the re, at the requested level, which I think was an appropriate thing to do. They were well reasoned. Uh, trash collection, we talked about. Um, the only thing I would add on the operating expense side is at your meeting in late February, um, you also directed that we continue the town subsidy for the Household Organic Wake Compost Program. This was started as a pilot program of the May first of two thousand and twenty-three.
Mm-hmm.
That's right. Um, and basically, um, you all expressed a desire to continue that subsidy, um, kind of taking it out of the pilot program realm and making it kind of an ongoing part of the town service portfolio, at least for now. Um, switching to the capital budget, um, one of the things that was your, one of your priorities was to establish a longer-range capital improvement program um, to guide future financial planning. Um, I put together a somewhat draft and complete template, just to get your reaction at the late February meeting, um, which got your blessing. So included, um, as part of this year's budget proposal, um, is a capital improvement program document that covers FY two thousand and twenty-five through FY two thousand and twenty-nine. I would say, um, that many years is probably a fairly common, um, probably the most common timeframe I've seen. You can certainly go out a little bit further, but the further you go out, the least, the less certainty there is surrounding it. You probably noticed in reviewing the, the budget document in the packet is that there was some capital line items that were zeroed out. We talked about this briefly in, in late February, but um, a number of the items included in capital, um, are actually operational expenses rather than capital. Um, so those items were zeroed out on the capital budget page, included in your agenda packet as part of the budget ordinance, and that funding was reallocated to other projects. Just to touch briefly on projects that are, um, funded in FY two thousand and twenty-five. On the equipment line item, um, staff is proposing the replacement of a two thousand and eight pickup truck. Um, this is the oldest in our fleet. Um, the maintenance staff has also requested a, um, purchase of a small trailer to transport, um, kind of house all the landscaping equipment tools, so everything's kind of together and doesn't have to be taken in and out of the truck, um, for efficiency reasons. Um, I mentioned earlier, under my manager's report, that we do have a bid out on the street that covers road paving, concrete curb installation, um, reconfiguration of the Argyle Kenneworth intersection and the installation of a speed bump on Wayman. Uh, regarding concrete curbs, um, we do have, still have asphalt curbs in a number of areas in town. As we're doing road paving, um, we're proposing that those be, um, converted over to concrete. Um, all it takes is one good whack of a snowplow and an asphalt curb will just crumble. Um, uh, the Waverly Sidewalk Project, you all are very familiar with. Um, it's covering the area from Montrose to down to the Penn Place Building. The sidewalk width will be increased from four to five feet in that stretch, just due to the heavy pedestrian traffic. Um, there will be some trees that will not survive the construction process. Um, so those trees will be replaced as part of the project. Um, and then there will be lighting installed as part of the project. Obviously, um, there will be future discussion regarding the selection of a fixture. Um, in terms of facilities for FY two thousand and twenty-five, uh, we had the exterior of Penn Place painted um, during this fiscal year. Also, as part of the town office renovation, we painted, um, most of the interior of the office, as well as the, the hallways and other areas on the third floor, which is now making the first and second floor look pretty shabby. Um, so we're proposing, uh, to repaint the common use areas on the first and second floors. Um, and we've had on the list for some time to replace the, uh, building fire alarm system. It just got kind of punted down the road, just due to other workload items. Um, but the current alarm system, uh, basically is, um, quite old, and we can no longer get, um, we're having difficulty getting parts for it. Um, kind of wrapping up, other FY two thousand and twenty-five part, projects are obviously, um, the Yendal Park Creation Project or Yendal Grove. Um, there is funding included for the repair of the masonry wall near the pool, as we talked about um, at your meeting in late February. Um, we, and I think you'll probably want to talk about this, we are proposing kind of an alternative repair than what you had discussed previously. Um, this would basically cover most of the wall. Um, essentially, if you're facing where the seated wall is at the pool, there's a light fixture, and then to the left is the masonry wall. Um, basically, we would mirror the seated wall on the other side, um, avoiding the light fixture, because that would be incredibly expensive to have to relocate. Um, we would leave a portion of the wall exposed, um, and that portion would be repaired.
And when are we going to do that work, Barb? After the pool closes?
It would be after the pool closes. Um, but you all have to sort of bless the methodology too, because this is what is, what is contemplated in the budget is, is different than what was talked about before. Um, there is also funding included in the proposed budget for, um, uh, stormwater evaluation. This was something you all talked about um, at your retreat in late October. It did not make the, the highest priority list, but it was right there with the other items. Um, there is essentially a placeholder number that is in the proposed budget, the amount of this that, um, and I want to clarify, by adjusting that we include funding, this does not mean that the town is acknowledging in any way that it has responsibility for stormwater in Garrett Park, but at some point, we do need to get our arms around the extent of the problem. If nothing else, to, uh, facilitate discussions with the county. The actual cost for this will vary depending on what the scope of the work actually is. So if you're talking about inventorying whatever existing infrastructure there is in Garrett Park, um, obviously, the cost is much less. If it's a full-blown series of community meetings, then the cost is much higher. Um, Jason Azar, without knowing, obviously, what is of interest to you all, gave me a, a range of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars for, as a placeholder, I, I went right down the middle with seventy-five thousand. Um, one of your priorities was to also, um, take a look at Cambria Park, and as well as some of the adjacent town-owned properties. Um, and basically do a design to essentially better utilize those spaces. Um, I think.
We also need one for the property next to Jack Mandau, the land. We need a design for that as well. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's funded.
Already in there.
That's funded.
Okay, good.
Um, the, the mayor and councilmember. The the mayor and council member Praskowski talked and provided a number of sixty thousand dollars for design services. So that's what's reflected in the proposed budget. Lastly, I needed to include something for town hall in terms of kind of moving to a more detailed design phase. I recognize there is some further discussion that you all would like to have, once, once we have at least an indication from the state of whether or not we were successful in getting any funding under the Legislative Initiative Program. For the purpose of putting together the budget, I had to assume something, so I put in a figure based on Wheaton and Architects' concept for recognizing that there needs to be conversation about that and what you all want to actually do as far as a design for town hall.
Barb, can we have a reminder of when we might hear from the state?
I'm checking my texts because I've been promised information as soon as it's available.
Yeah, it's a session.
It's kind of happening now.
Session ends today. Today's the end. So we will know at least the states.
Okay, the next days or week or something.
Yeah, it it should be very, very soon. Yeah, might even be hour or minute. It depends how long they go tonight. As a reminder, and we talked about this on a number of occasions, both recently at the late February meeting, based on concept four and probably even something even vaguely in that realm, there is a funding gap for a construction that has yet to be resolved and will need to be resolved by further discussion. And certainly, whether or not we get funding from the state is a part of that component. But even if we got the full amount that we requested, there's still a funding gap, I think is the important thing to keep in mind. Just basically process dates, obviously, for your consideration this evening is possible introduction of the ordinance. Adoption of the budget ordinance is currently scheduled for May thirteenth. One thing I just want to mention, you actually obviously have more time in many respects to adopt a budget, but what is critical about the month of May, I don't have the exact date yet, but some, generally, it's the the third or fourth week of May is when we are required to submit our real property tax rates and our personal property tax rates to the county. They have to have all that information in by the, by the end of May for, in order for them to do the programming, to get the bills out on time. And included as part of that submission to the county is the household assessment for trash. I'm just putting this as a question mark. Obviously, you need to have some discussion. But whether or not, one of the things I'd like to get direction on before you adjourn for this evening is whether or not, after you have some conversation, whether you feel there's a need for another budget work session, we deliberately kept the agenda on the lighter side tonight, so you would have some opportunity to discuss the budget without the need for another meeting. So that's obviously your call. So with that, I'm going to turn everything back over to you all for discussion and see what questions you have.
So I guess the first thing is that in order to to keep up with this timeline, we do need to introduce tonight, because we need to have that one-month layover holdover before we can adopt. So undoubtedly, there'll be changes to this. Whereas on the historic preservation, we we identified on that ordinance, what we wanted changed before, like we we adjusted what we were introducing. I guess I'm proposing that we introduce the ordinance as Barb has it presented, and then we make changes afterward. So at least we're we're moving forward. Does that make sense?
Twenty 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 twenty-four dash four.
Right. So so rather than make changes to what's introduced, we introduce so that we get the clock ticking, and then we talk about the changes. Right. Not to say that this is exactly what we're going to do.
Yeah.
But so you follow what I'm saying? Like I
Yes.
Can, looking for somebody to to make a motion to introduce.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash four.
Second.
All in favor?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's unanimous. So.
And so we will schedule.
Well, we have a little bit of time now. We can either talk about it now and see where the areas are that need further discussion. It could be that that we, you know, already discussed the things that we did, and this reflects pretty accurately what we want to do. And then we just won't need a work session, but it could also be that we talk for a few minutes and say, oh, my gosh, this is an area that we definitely need to reconvene in the next month so that we can handle. So I think one piece that caught my attention that I wanted to make sure that we discussed was this idea of the the local income tax. Barb said that it's conservative to have a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget for that. There's this big fluctuation. I don't have a problem with it being conservative, even if it's too conservative. I don't think that it is having a negative, it would have a negative impact. We're not making any decisions about other things. We're not underfunding anything else in the budget by having this be a really conservative.
And we can always adjust it as the money comes in.
Right, right. But there's nothing, right, right. But we're not shortchanging anything else in the process. We're not saying we're not going to do the compost project. We're not saying we're getting rid of the town archevis because we can't afford it.
Well, I mean, I I'm not sure that's clear, what, until we look at some of the expenditure line items and whether we're in agreement with that. For example, once we know what the well, the yard waste will be covered by an increase on the revenue side. So that's, I guess, out of the that realm. But under capital, for example, do we want to add more money to town hall and also set aside money for stormwater and park planning? Or do we just want to do one or the other in twenty-five and put off the other? And so we're making those kinds of choices, and that also could be dependent on what income estimates are.
Okay.
That, yeah, the the capital gains in general for twenty twenty-five added up to a a lot. I mean, I, some of that, we are expecting to receive some funding from outside. I'm sorry, the capital projects.
Well, okay, so let's, let's get this like number for the income taxes. Yeah.
I I think we should, we should consider postponing some of those projects. And we should evaluate which ones we're going to keep and which ones we're going to defer.
Okay. So are you saying you want us to evaluate the spending before we determine how conservative we want to be on the income taxes? Because I think those are, I can see how, I know how they're related, but I want to nail down this one piece.
Well, I see the income tax like it, it's not like we spend down eighty, ninety percent of our capital budget every year, like it kind of works on a longer cycle. So say it's five fifty now. If it's surprisingly four fifty that comes in, then we've got a problem. We could make up a hundred if it's six fifty. And that's, you know, something that just gets re-appropriated the next year in money that we don't necessarily really touch. So I just don't. I don't see a problem with it being kind of like where it is, a little bit conservative. It's, I feel like it's a lot easier to handle a hundred extra than it is to handle a hundred short. I don't think it has anything to do with projects or deferring projects or, because that's kind of, that's already allotted in.
I mean, I think, I think it's, I I I, just looking back and and how Barb explained how the the state distributes the the payments to us. I mean, I don't see any circumstance in which we get less than five hundred fifty. I think that truly is very conservative, but there's no way of knowing, I mean, if if these anomaly years of having seven hundred and forty this year is because we had so many other smaller years. I mean, I think it's, I think it's a fine place to be, and I, what do you think?
Um, I was actually going to ask one of our distinguished audience members. Ken, what do you think? Because you've heard this whole discussion. What do you, I mean, you're big on this budgetary stuff. Interest in your opinion.
Thank you for asking. Basically, you're basically picking twenty-one, twenty-two. And Barb is correct. She's saying that the twenty-one and twenty-two numbers should have been a fire. And some of that slipped into twenty-three, twenty-four, so even then, we lower than twenty-one and twenty-two. That by in real, in terms of the description that she used. So I'm saying fifty-five, fifty is a very well.
So what do you think it should be?
But that may be good, because then we can use the extra money that's getting back at the end of the year. So, I mean, we'll get the money either way. I I'm not sure it's such a big thing to concern ourselves.
So potentially, the money that we would have available for this project, we're not going to actually be able to allocate until the end of twenty twenty-five if we're wrong by the estimate.
Well, except that one of the other big priorities that we expressed was was Cambria. And we are budgeting for a small piece of that. And so if the overage would go to that, I mean, like, I I don't want to make the assumption that it's about where any additional funds would go, and I I just don't see that it's would slow us down by by raising this number. If you all want to raise the number, let's let's raise the number. I don't have a vote, so.
I don't mind showing up a little bit, but I just feel like it's money. It's not realistically going to be touched. Like, we don't, we never seem to spend in dangers on what we're spending almost all of our capital budget.
You probably, if I may, you probably can't see this. This is the pattern of income taxes.
You can zoom in a bit, the bottom right corner. See that slider?
Yeah, I can't see that.
It would be helpful for our aging ons.
I'm trying this as an Excel file.
See, it's like.
Do you see that the slide bar at the very bottom of the?
No, do you want anyone to come over here?
Oh, yeah, here.
Within Excel.
In other words, to increase the size, yeah.
See, that'll help.
There you go.
Something like that.
Trying to see.
A little more? Thank you.
That's better.
So basically, this is the pattern of income taxes. The reason I highlighted the November of twenty twenty-three is, as I said, that one payment alone, the reconciling payment was three hundred thousand dollars. So if you, I mean, you you all are are free to do what you want. I would say that as some of you have said, the money is going to come in. If if this is about the funding gap for town hall, even if this number got bumped up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it does not solve the funding problem for town hall. That is a much larger conversation that you all need to have. Correct. And if we don't get any state funding, or we don't, I mean, as a reminder, if we got a hundred percent of what we asked for from the state, we still have a one million dollar funding gap. So as I was putting these numbers together, to me, potentially putting you all in a position where you move money to capital, that then doesn't materialize. It is certainly not what I would recommend you do. Having said that, it's your budget if you want to do it.
And if we don't get it, but we don't put it in the budget, but we actually get it, it's been always.
It 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 shows up, yeah. It shows up.
I mean, it might come for eighteen months, but.
Right.
Yeah.
So it could be sandbagging by a hundred, a hundred fifty. We could sandbag by less, and maybe we get an extra fifty.
Right. I mean, at this point, the the extension of the filing deadlines is over. I mean, that doesn't mean that everyone filed a hundred percent on time, but there are penalties for doing so. But clearly, some, even like I say, I can certainly forward all the state transmissions, but they caution every transmission every month they they send to all the governmental entities, whether at the county or at the state, is just talking about the bizarre patterns that have occurred because of the pandemic. You know, in my mind, I would certainly recommend being more conservative, because if the goal is to bump up town hall, even a hundred thousand dollars does not solve the funding gap for town hall.
Correct.
It it doesn't do a darn good. Doesn't solve the problem. So to me, it becomes somewhat of an academic exercise in some respects. The funding, if the funding comes in, it comes in. You can recognize that you can do what you want with it. But you have a much broader conversation that you all need to have about that project.
Is Jenny Kervinick want to talk? Is that?
I don't, I don't see a hand up.
It's just a pointer, Chris.
I just want to recommend, I I am so sorry. I'm hoping to catch a flight at five in the morning.
My gosh.
I don't know if we're going to be able to finish close to time or
Okay.
or or have another meeting to do the budget, but.
Okay, so, so, okay, so the issues that that we need to discuss are this, you know, the the projections for, for in for revenues. And the, I mean, is the other.
In in addition to for revenues, in addition to local income taxes, a better understanding of the carryover assumptions. Because that's very different from previous years.
The hundred and ten thousand carryover?
Right.
I don't understand. I still don't understand where the carryover hurts us.
Because we we already adjusted the carryover. We already did an adjustment last month. So is that Barb? Is that, is that accurate?
I'm not sure what I understand. Are you saying the difference between twenty, the carryover from twenty-three to twenty-four and the anticipated from twenty-four to twenty-five? What was largely driving it, and I can certainly send it to you, I believe. It's been a while, but when we had the final report for FY twenty twenty-three, I kind of explained where that carryover amount came from. So I will just send that memo to you all, if I may, or I can try to, actually, I can't repeat it right now. It was largely driven by income taxes. There were some other factors, certainly, but it was a variety of things. The contingency account didn't get spent. Income taxes, obviously, in FY twenty twenty-three came in a hundred thousand dollars higher than we'd seen in any prior year. Once again, I think that was a function of pandemic-related issues. And then there were probably a variety of accounts. I would need to pull the the memo clearly that where things, either revenues came in a little bit higher or expenses came in lower.
Okay, so you expect the carryover for those reasons.
From twenty-three to twenty-four, those were the reasons for it. For twenty, from twenty-four to twenty-five, based on the spreadsheet I just brought up, I am assuming that income taxes will likely exceed to seven hundred and forty thousand dollars based on the trends and the pattern of distributions typically by the state. At this juncture, I do not expect that you all will spend the forty thousand dollars in contingency funds. It doesn't appear like there will be a need for that. And then there's a few other accounts that either had looked like they'll have savings or a few revenue accounts that will likely come in a little bit higher.
But your proposal is for a hundred and ten, is, looks at a hundred and ten thousand carryover, whereas in twenty-one and twenty-two, it was above four hundred thousand.
I wasn't here then, so I mean, I could go back and do some analysis. I think I glanced at it at one point, and I I believe when I, and like I said, I didn't do a whole in-depth study. The years were done. It was over. But it does seem like income taxes played a factor, as well as unexpendited contingency funds, at a quick eyeball, looking at it. I say, I was not a part in putting together those budgets, so I don't know them all that well. I also believe in some of the earlier years in talking to Mary Ruckey. I mean, I think this was probably understandable. I think the town budgeted more capital projects than it actually undertook. I think it budgeted for tree work that didn't take place. Some of that was a function of resources. Some of that was a function of staffing, for example. Andrea had a, had a baby while she worked for the town. There was an interim manager during that time. And also during those years, that was also the time of the pandemic, which was certainly a kind of a funky time for all of us in local government and patterns of work. But that's probably all I can offer, once again, without doing a deep dive into what happened in those years.
Okay.
It seems to me that we funded all the things that we've accounted for in here, and these are estimates, and they're your best guess estimates. And if we're wrong, we're we're not spending the money. We're just budgeting it, and then we can always catch up later. So I don't know that there's any damage that's going to happen from this. And as we move forward, we're going to find out if we get funding for these other projects and see how the revenue comes in, and then we can always adjust.
But then the other piece is the capital accounts. We've got four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we're putting into our, into the capital budget. And we we started talking at our budget session last month, whenever it was. I can't even remember the the dates anymore, but we started talking about how to allocate that.
Sure, and if I might, I think just from, and obviously, there's some timing constraints here. One thing you might just want to do a quick glance at and just see if anything jumps out at any of you all is, is to look at the capital improvement. is to look at the capital improvement program document and eyeball what is included for FY twenty twenty five and whether or not you're comfortable with that, or if you need more data, because um, you know, there's certainly things you might want to tweak on one side or the other, but a lot of the dollars are on the capital side. Um, and those, I would say the capital projects is where there was, you know, I tried to rely on the priorities that you all set at the retreat and some guidance that you gave back at the end of February. But I would be the first to admit, in some respects, this is my my read of what I thought were your priorities and where to put money.
It doesn't add up to a high cost if you you add all of those up.
Yeah, it's a big number.
I know that a good part of it is to be paid by sources that are outside of our immediate revenue that nonetheless, there it's it's a high number.
That's a pretty important process to do that, kind of have a a real longer range capital plan, because before this town has always just had this thing which you just kind of set little pieces of money aside and nothing really ever happens. It's better to have a much better plan. I think it's also important, I think, just to keep like this building as an example and in kind of in comparison or in in proportion, because for years, like almost nothing was put into the budget for this. It was resisted to put money into a budget.
Yeah.
And lately, it's been every spare change we can get, we just keep throwing money at it. But I think it's it's got to be continuously looked at in relation to all the other assets the town has. We can't we don't need to have like a Ferrari Town Hall and have everything else be junk. So I think we gotta.
Yeah, I was looking at FY twenty five, sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, I wasn't even, you're right. It is good to have these other, I mean, I glanced at those, but I was really looking at twenty twenty five, and I got a total of about almost, you know, one point four million.
Yeah, right. So that's not money, new money that we're putting in. That's that's looking at the money that we have currently and reallocating it.
Yeah, so all, yes, all the FY twenty twenty five projects are funded. Um, I think to the point Stephen was making, and I I would draw your attention to the streets and curbs line item. So the funding that I I allocated um was to make sure that streets and curbs and what we anticipate, you know, obviously, if you have a mild winter, um, some things might shift a year. But basically, I included funding as I was moving stuff around to make sure that FY twenty twenty five and twenty twenty seven were funded. What I want to draw your attention to is the massive number that is sitting out in FY twenty twenty nine.
Twenty twenty what?
Twenty nine. So basically, the way that this is funded right now is you have, I put money, ma- made sure that twenty twenty five, there's no work in twenty twenty six, and there's a small amount of work in twenty twenty seven. All of that, as proposed, is currently funded. We will have some money that is being set aside from highway user revenue that is being reserved because we didn't have a project. As you saw, you know, highway user revenue is bringing in anywhere from sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year. So I think as you kind of assess things and as we go forward, do not lose, you know, so if you look at what we'll probably have in highway user revenue by twenty twenty eight, that that money will be reserved and can cover that. But look at the massive number in FY twenty twenty nine. Um, but I think to Stephen's point, um, I mean, budgeting is all a matter of of priorities. But the mistake I have seen more cities than I can count make is not keeping up with your infrastructure, whether that is buildings, whether that is roads. And then all of a sudden, um, you know, when your streets start degrading, they don't get better. They just get worse. And the worse they get, the more expensive it becomes. Um, so I tried to do my best to sort of listen to what your priorities are, but also make sure that we were taking care of our fleet, taking care of our infrastructure.
But the real wild part is stormwater management. And if I'm reading this right, you don't have anything in there for twenty twenty nine or twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty.
Correct, because it all ties back to dec- decisions that you will be making at some point.
Right.
The two really major unknowns, and we talked about this at the end of February, and they remain the unknowns, is funding for Town Hall.
Right.
And what is the resolution of ownership and maintenance responsibility for stormwater problems in Garrett Park?
Right.
Not something you're going to resolve tonight. Um.
We've got some money in twenty twenty six for Town Hall.
Yeah, but we don't actually have money.
But it's not, it's not funded. That's just what we like.
Right, it's not funded, so.
Could I ask a question of clarification about the highway user fees? Uh huh. I'm sorry, because I think I may have asked this before, but I just want to make sure I say. Those FY twenty five costs that you have listed for streets and curbs, have you accounted for? Are you planning to transfer any of the reserve highway user fees over for that? Or are you planning to use?
Um, as currently drafted, Gerald Lee, um, those would be funded with cash. I truthfully was looking at the looming needs in FY twenty twenty nine um, and thinking that the highway user revenue would accumulate um and be a little bit of a cushion for FY twenty twenty nine, that those reserved funds could be applied to that.
What's the total of currently available?
I was trying to think about that. So we didn't have any eligible projects in twenty twenty three, so that money got reserved. Um, I think we're probably sitting around a hundred and twenty five thousand by the end of this fiscal year. I'm going off memory right now, because it doesn't show up in the reserve summary as an accumulated total.
And are we not using that reserve money right away because we're trying to use ARPA money for that?
Correct. Here's what I, I mean, and not to further complicate this, and this is why I I handle things the way I did. What I would by your main meeting, we will have actual bid numbers for a slew of capital improvements, meaning waverly paving. Um, what I would probably suggest we do at at that point.
So we're going to have light selected by then?
No, 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 no. Um, but what I was going to say is, I think once we have firm contract pri- uh, firm bid price, and you'll be facing a bid award, if we should probably do what you did before, and we use ARPA funds to pay for that.
Those will meet the the RFP requirements for the ARPA.
Yes, we we specifically put a federal contracting addendum in in the bid document, anticipating that we would go ahead and use ARPA funds for that project. Um, and basically then, yeah, do the kind of swap of funds, if you will, uh, just to make sure that we get the ARPA funds obligated as soon as possible. We will not have any problem getting them spent down. Um, but I think this, the sooner we can do that, the better.
Okay, all right.
So, but like, I'm sorry.
I I just, I want to get a handle on 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 what we need to discuss. It's not going to be able to get done in the next ten or eleven minutes.
No, but I think any data request information that you want, I can start accumulating that.
Right. I mean, I guess what I'm getting at with my questions is, I would like to see us um make a more clear designation of additional funding for Town Hall. And so I I'm concerned that the current budget doesn't express a priority for Town Hall. I would definitely, I mean, I think in our discussions at the budget work session, we express that as a much higher priority than, say, planning for changes that came through your park. Um, and the uncertainty of needs for planning for the stormwater infrastructure. So just as two examples, but I just feel like we could use some time to see if there is a way in the budget to um allocate more funds towards that priority.
Well, I don't want to, I mean, I kind of take exception to that because we already have um, one point one million dollars that we are allocating to Town Hall. I mean, this is not like, we're not putting any, the fact that we don't always put with every single tranche that we get, we put a portion into Town Hall, or we put a chunk. I mean, it still is, we still have, we've committed with town funds, one point one million dollars already. So that are that are that they're still there. So I don't think that it shows a lack of commitment to not keep adding to that.
But for instance, with Cambria Park, I mean, there's no money in the out years for it. Um, we still have to figure, we still have some stuff that we don't have unknowns on, so I'm wondering, there's a contingency shown on the other on on the budget uh report. And then we've got the CIP. Um, do we still have that contingency, which is almost three hundred thousand dollars?
Um, if you look at the capital budget account page, which is right on the opposite facing side, there is currently a contingency amount of roughly two hundred ninety eight thousand. What is proposed is that amount would go down by sixty seven thousand. Um, part of the thinking with the contingency, which once again, um, it's up to you all, is there's this uncertain specter hanging over stormwater.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously, if you want to move it to Town Hall, um, and then, you know, you would have to have to move it back.
Okay, it sounds like we're not ready to commit fully on the capital project side, if I'm understanding correctly. On the revenue side, it seems like there's not that much we can do. But on the spending side, it seems like we we may want to have one more meeting to just, you know, to deliberate once and for all and pass our decision about how much for which of these products, because indeed, Town Hall has one point one million, but according to these estimates, it still means two point eight in twenty six and beyond to in order to execute uh option four.
But I think those decisions are going to be what funding we get from the county and the state and what whether or not we're going to do a bonds offering.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Okay.
I mean, to Todd's point, I think one option is now you are coming up on the time you were scheduled to adjourn. Obviously, if Todd's got that early of a flight. No, but I I think so is important, but um, you know, I I think where a lot of your focus is is probably, and I, Joanna and I were talking about this, probably the capital budget.
Right.
Um, and whether or not you want to move money from one project to another, I mean, and I think that's kind of the key decisions. Um, you know, probably by the time you reconvene, whenever that might be, um, sometimes between now and May thirteenth, um, we will know what we get from the state. And, you know, that's, once again, as we talked about at the end of February, you know, what we were looking at at that point, based on option four, is if we got every every dime we asked for from the state, which I think is, you know, unlikely, then you were looking at a one million dollar shortfall. If we got nothing from the state, nothing from the feds, it's about a one point seven million dollar shortfall. Um, you know, that is certainly a critical part of your, you know, your policy planning through the budget process.
So when do we think that, I mean, obviously, the closer to May thirteenth that we meet, the more likely we will be to have this information.
Well, we won't, we know, we won't have the funds from the information from from the federal government. Now, we will have the information.
From the state.
Possibly tonight, from the state.
So I guess the question is, do you all want to have um a budget work session to kind of hammer this out before May thirteenth? Um, do you want to have that in person? Because there are more limited dates because of Town Hall being booked. Do you want to do that virtually? Um, it just.
I think there's so many unknowns. I mean, stormwater, are we going to hire an attorney and sue somebody or? So, so, you know, I mean, there's a lot of wild cards there, so that these funds could really fluctuate greatly. So it seems to me like this is a roadmap. We know what the projects are, and as we move forward to funding, we'll know how to close these gaps in if and when we have them.
Vote on it now?
Well, we don't have, but I don't know that we need another work session, is my point.
Okay.
I kind of agree with your point, Lisa, because it a lot, it is a roadmap, and we're we're not going to be spending these big funds like really quickly in the next couple of months anyway. Even if, even if we were going to spend everything that's allocated for this building, that would be in not even next year, it would be the year after.
Yeah, I mean.
Kind of construction. And I kind of, I worry, like, it it has troubled me a little bit with this building is we keep talking about like piling more and more money on it as as though we have no other projects. But the way I look at it is like this building is maybe like on a A to F grade. It's like a C. I mean, it's a C plus. It's it's not fall apart. Um, we have other places that are in much, much worse condition, and we're basically saying, and we could be considering, you know, just taking all the funding that could go to all those other things and then throw it in there, so we could have this be, you know, spectacular operate, but still basically the same and everything else would just be sidelined for probably several years until money.
It may not even be spectacular. It may go from a C plus to a to a B plus. I'm not sure.
Oh, the thing we were talking about, the thing we were talking about, it would take it from like a C plus to an A, but it would but I, there's a much bigger gap, but the condition of the parks is much worse than this building. It's not even close. So I I would love to see both of them done. I I I was just really worried about doing this at the expense of everything else. I'm worried about coming up, spending extra money on doing an assessment when we know we don't even have the money yet. It's not even budgeted yet. Um.
An assessment for what?
Of the Cambria Park. Man, I think.
Okay, um, so I I have on my calendar from many months ago, a placeholder for a work session on April twenty second. That's two Mondays from now.
I I object to that date. It's just, it's a holiday. It is a Jewish religious holiday.
It's a pat, that's. Joanna, if I'm, if I may, if everyone could commit to, you don't have to do it tonight.
Right.
If everyone could commit to sometime tomorrow, either texting me or emailing me, letting me know of dates that are not workable for you um, between now and maybe the end of April.
And will we combine this with the refuse collection so we can do one meeting that?
Yes, we could, we could do both. Um, like I say, I think if everyone is, if everyone's comfortable with a virtual meeting, that will open up a lot more dates, just because Town Hall is booked oftentimes in the evening.
So we're we're looking from for a seven thirty to nine thirty or ten thirty spread on on a nice weekday evening, right?
Right.
Friday.
Correct, yeah. Yes.
Sunday, so.
All right, so, but we have introduced this, so we are at least, we started the clock.
I I think the other thing I would just ask before you adjourn, Joanna, is in addition to letting me know your availability, um, if there is certain information that's not covered in the transmittal uh message, just some data requests. If there's some other information I can provide that would help guide your decision making, if you could also kind of shoot that to me. Um, I think your your availability is the most important thing right now. You can shoot me the questions later. But I would just need time to perhaps pull data and things like that.
About a date before May first?
Yes, that's what I'm assuming. It it just, if you all have changes, it does take some time to sort of cycle the changes through and not make mistakes, hopefully. Um, so I would like to have some time, and I would note between May first and your meeting on May thirteenth, there's also an election that the staff is um involved in. Yeah, we'll do that. Yeah.
All right. Um, okay, so the time is nine fifty eight. I hesitate to ask if we have any unfinished business or any new business. Rather, going to just block over those.
Say that we should do some kind of proclamation for Claire.
When it's time, definitely.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Um, I I would just like to say, um, under unfinished or
Please.
new, I'd like to request that we put on a future agenda um, addressing the ordinance issue related to the driveway aprons. So we put off addressing that at an earlier point, but I think that, um, I think we should, we should have a discussion where we provide Barb direction to work with the attorney to provide ordinance amendments. But I I don't think we want to have the attorney work on it without some direction.
Absolutely. That's a great reminder. Appreciate that. Okay.
And um lest it be forgotten, we do something with the information we have from the the closed session.
Yes.
I guess that's going to have to be another closed session, but nevertheless, we.
We have to close session.
At the same time.
Yeah.
Depends on what.
Their meeting at the end?
Yeah.
On availability of.
Oh, the council, I can try to, um.
Um, all right. Gerald Lee, would you like to do a quick arboretum update?
Yes, thank you. Um, so the the Arbors has provided um uh proposed tree selections for four trees for Waverly, and those will be a mix. It will not be um, a single type of tree across across that, but they're all natives, and it's a nice selection of of natives. Um, also, Barb mentioned that um the town maintenance crew is working on preparing for the new trees. If anyone wants to look at some of the new trees that have been purchased, um, they're in the pool a lot in the meantime. Um, and then finally, we're going to be uh having our biannual tree walk on May twenty sixth at one P M. That's a Sunday afternoon. That's Memorial Day weekend on the Sunday. So uh more information will be put out on the list serve in terms of meeting at ten place. Get that out there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Lisa, do you have any?
Yeah, archives. Claire is leaving, as we said. Um, we've started oral histories of some of the people who live in Garrett Park. And um, we're working with the historic preservation on the Chevy tour. I just gave you all tickets.
Lovely.
Um, and I think that's about it.
All right, um, we will all be in touch in the next day.
With Barb?
Um, at ten oh one, meeting is adjourned.